You know what the implications of it, what the president cons are.
But this is the --
This was the original.
So that's an old rendering. We actually, we haven't moved forward into the feasibility phase with this eastern entrance. The major reason and the thing that we were testing and Larry and the team we had been testing is that it would extend on to school district property. Right? So the line of village property is approximately the wall that is, you know, separating the school. It's approximately there. There was actually a point, some point when there must have been an expansion considered, where that line has been adjusted a little bit. So the line has actually, this was the original line, and at some point they must have been thinking about addition in this area, so the line's been adjusted, something like this.
That's right where the retaining wall is currently.
Right. That was where the original one is. There's been some kind of adjustment. So at some point in the past, there's been a land shift that's happened where there's just some kind of switching. So what we looked at was if we go on the east side here, the positives are the potential for visibility coming down the street, a much, a much greater independent sort of brand for the theater you could, you could produce there. Also, we looked at incorporating some of the other thinking around the streetscape. There was already a plan to sort of better use that, that area. And, and then, you know, one of the pluses that came up clearly is that this could, this project could happen while you still use the theater. Right? So there would be a way that you could develop this project without taking the theater offline, where the other one, you know, you can't, you wouldn't build, even what we were showing, we can't build that in three months, you know, or it would be expensive to build in three months. So this has a, has a lot of pros to it. So what we have been doing was, we went to the school board to sort of review.
School administration.
School administration, not the board.
On my side.
To just sort of discuss what kind of challenges they saw here and whether they could see any synergies that would help them. And I think in general, I think they saw mostly synergies, and there was a few things around security. Making the theater sort of connected to the district's campus seems like there could be a lot of potential use between those. The concern's about, there's a, you can see this slightly here, there's a connection here, sort of a ramp through the gym.
It's the covered wall, Clay.
Yeah, it's sort of a half, it's not, it's not actually accessible, they don't have an ADA accessible connection between these two buildings anyway. And they have sort of security problems back here. So if we put a wall up here, we only exacerbate that. But I think the discussions that we had had is if we did do something like this, you know, there may be a, a boundary that's associated with this, there may be a component of this that gives you your ADA access if there's ADA components associated with this, there might be some way to make a connection there. There are some plans that we could just go through with this next and this, just to sort of show you what we're thinking.
Before you change this slide, sorry. So to the north of the proposed new entrance, that's that unusable playground of theirs, right?
Yeah, there's a playground, there's a playground sort of up in this area, and then there's access to the gym.
Oh, yeah, it was past the gym.
Right. So, you know, if you go up and around the building, the farmers market, it's a little bit past. I think there was some concern at the, at the district level of, you know, safety and having people sort of beyond this point, even right now, they'd rather not have this be a public thoroughfare, they'd rather force people around to the arcades. So something like this, you could, you could, you know, push that point. You could say, okay, we'll do a fence or a boundary or something as part of it.
So John, you're seeing that as a plaza there with seating, so?
Right. We sort of just sort of, we're ripping out a little amphitheater thing, so it could be an outdoor classroom, it could be an outdoor theater, it could be a gathering, so it's a kind of place that sort of anchors us. One of the things we're doing here, and one of the other benefits, it's more technical, is if you come in here and you turn and you start heading this way, you approximately have the elevation that you need to get into the building at the right level. So if you come in here, right, for ADA, you come in here, there's some kind of ramping, even if you come in here, there's a lot of ramping you need to do to get up to that height. So there's some benefit, and it hasn't been worked out in a lot of detail, but there's some benefit to actually accessing the site here and sort of staying high and potentially having your.
We were thinking that we would maintain the gate. We believe that the, that the decorative gate there was original to the school building, and it has some historical integrity of its own, so we would utilize that gate for perhaps an entryway for the pandemic.
The higher the gate we have, it essentially can use. The gate can also be, you know, it's mainstream, but it could also be relocated if it's more sensitive.
And how about parking spots?
So parking, we, we, we're looking for location for about 200 spots. There's no, there's no additional parking.
They're going to build it to the hill on Ferris Street.
But, no, but in terms of, in terms of drop off, what you have here is the part or the related parking limitation here, which is a perfect.
And that's not going to change.
That's not going to change. So what you have here is you had a residential street with a tight street where you had people always turning down. Now that street's been gated at the end at the private point, so you have three point turns at the end of it. So, you know, you really could develop this as dual use for emergency and for drop off. And there's a, you know, there's a few benefits associated with it. In terms of parking, I think, you know, this may be a time to, you know, we talked about potentially formalizing the agreement with the district about, you know, people do parking in the district lot for shows, and then you have the outdoor lot too. I think that's the right way to serve parking for the building.
And I know we've been under construction in that spot for a while, but is that spot used as parking now for, for, will it be used in the future? Hasn't been used in the, along the building?
Yeah.
No. Not to any great degree. I mean, there's, maybe there's cars sitting there once in a while, but.
Sometimes everyone leaves out there or something.
Yeah, but nothing that's, that critical.
When we do a deeper dive into a feasibility study, parking and traffic will be components of that feasibility study, so there will be a lot more information that we can follow up on in those questions.
Yeah, we should just be careful to indicate that we're not going to solve the parking needs of the theater when it's full. Yeah. No, I think, but what it does in terms of safety, in terms of traffic, is give you a proper drop off condition, a much better drop off condition, and keep the traffic from making this turn based on what we can.
So what is the light green on the inner side where, where now it's like an alleyway? What is that?
So this alleyway is being used as a service alleyway for the building now, it has a lot of equipment that's associated with the building. I don't think we need to take it over, and there's a significant level change from here. What we are going to consider is that we may have a egress point from down. Right now, there's a egress door, a priority egress at the lower level. You might maintain that, you might clean this up, but really what our goal was is if this, if the building here was going to keep all of its services as it has along that wall, what you might do is develop some kind of vegetated hedge that hides that junk from view as you come down this way, but allow it to still have that service function. I think you could, you could grow the project to, to make improvements along this line, but at least the way it's shown now, it could be either where you, we can have improvements there or not. I think right now from a feasibility standpoint, we should potentially maintain at least the egress kind of value.
Yes, and currently that egress is serving the theater. It's, it's half of what's required for the capacity of the theater.
Right. I think it's certainly serving the village hall.
It's serving the village hall as well.
From, from the village halls to there, it's all theater. It's all theater.
There's no landing.
Right.
And with the other side, if this were to develop and your main entrance were here, what would happen to the other door?
Service, that would, that would be the secondary access, so maybe you would still bring scenery or you'd bring, you know, there'd be a back door. So it would still have an egress function too, so you'd still be able to egress out of it, it just wouldn't be, it wouldn't have the pressure of being the gathering place or the taking place or the, so might we just take a probably quick look at the plan. So this, this is showing the ground level. So this is what we're talking about, this degress exit down at the same level of this path. So much of what's shown there would remain, we would even potentially leave that elevator in place. So then on the lobby level, you come in, you have a lobby, you have an ornamental stair up and proper restaurants, you know, down at that level.
The box office function as well.
Right, you could fit a box office in there and you could fit the elevator up here in the front.
The elevator is still where the elevator is, only you're just.
Oh, no, because it's a elevator. So we're showing a new elevator up in this location, this elevator, you know, you may maintain it if it doesn't make sense to pull it out, or, or you, you know, we're showing an elevator. This elevator is, you know, slow and doesn't really meet, I don't think it meets itself's ability requirements, the way it's now, it's a little bit tight.
It serves well for sets.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the question about where do you take that out is, it's more complicated because it's also providing, it's providing some accessibility to this space, right?
Right. To the, to the second floor, yeah.
To the second floor, so there's, there's.
Only on, only to the upper landing, not to the lower landing.
Right. So it has.
It's got limited value right now.
Right. So then at the, at the upper level, when you come up to the top of the ornamental stair, you have this room that partly would give you some breakout space that would be associated with the theater. So right now, if you see the existing theater with the box office, you come in here, you're in this little lobby, and then you're here, and much of this is really stair. So what the theater lacks is it doesn't have any kind of breakout space, standing breakout space. So this, you know, if this becomes, it basically reverses it, if this becomes the main entrance instead of the theater, you have some kind of gathered breakout space before you come in and out of the theater. And we're hoping that, you know, we've shown something that looks like, and that's, but you know, you know, still have potentially a western view, that the western view that you have there wouldn't be so dominating on the residential street, you know, you'd have a high western view.
So say that again, if you're looking out across there, can you look down across and see out to the river?
Yeah, you can see the river and you see the beautiful roof of the gym.
Definitely.
And, I mean, when we were meeting with the district staff, they were like, what we need is to have a green roof there, and you need to access the roof, and you're like, that would only be great.
Yeah, sure.
Do it.
And you guys know why. It would be harder, just money.
Parking, parking group.
Right, park on the rear access at the second level.
John, it should, it probably should be mentioned as well, as one of the mutual benefits that we discussed with the school was that the amphitheater could be considered part of an educational use.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah. That was part of the streetscape idea initially, that that would be a gathering, but kind of a, the connection to kind of mini theater connected to the theater.
Right. And, you know, if you think about it, you did make a connection, if there was a covered rail connection between Manchester School and this building, you could almost have curriculum in the theater, you could use it when you need to. I mean, but that, there would be a lot of potential benefit overlapping.
How big is that section?
This is a, it's about 800 square feet.
I'm talking about the.
All this one?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the square footage is, I think it's over a thousand. I mean, some, a space like that could probably accommodate, you know, two classrooms, 30 to 60 people. Yeah, that's what, I think it's probably like that, pretty easily.
How big is the new proposal compared to the original?
Oh, it was similar, similar in terms of size. I mean, you have a little bit, I think what we were showing here when we were going to the district is I think you would want, if there was going to be a land swap or some kind of, potentially we would ask for more, you know, you'd go with the larger, you know, you wouldn't want to ask for two feet less than you need.
This is bigger than the original, like we were thinking, because we are just coming out to the sidewalk, to the curb.
Right.
The western approach, whereas here, we have a lot more space for people to gather and, you know, the, the whole experience of arriving at the theater is, is different because of the padded space.
I think it's qualified as the year we came up with.
Yeah, it was Greg.
It was Greg.
Just so you know, it wasn't us. It was Greg, like, why isn't it on the east side? And I was like, oh, crap.
So I, you know, another new question, where, where's the funding for this?
I mean, you want to know everything, don't you? There is none. So this is, this will all be a challenging project from a funding standpoint, and, I mean, estimates obviously have to be done, and there's a lot of steps to go here. I should, I, I want to make it clear that, you know, the discussion that we're having tonight is your first chance to even see what was being thought about. We've, we've reviewed it with school administrators, but, but the school board hasn't seen this either. So someone's got to see it first, so you, you guys, you know, got the short straw, so. You know, after, after this happens, and if there's some tacit approval here, then the discussions will be with the school. If all of that goes well, then we can start talking about exactly how to execute on this, which is, you know, getting into more of a feasibility study, getting into, you know, again, starting design and all that. And I, and I think that the plan was to seek out fundraising for a good portion of this. I, I don't want to speak for.
I think I'm, I thought about two years ago, a couple different groups, and I think the thought process was, you can't really have, you can't really do fundraising until you have a kind of a, a concept, you know, so, you had to, to, you had to start somewhere. And kind of thought, if you have a concept, it'd be a heck of a lot easier to raise money for it, rather than saying, hey, we want to raise money for conceptual design, you know, and starting there, if it's, you know, if you have a big notion, then try to raise money for that. So I think that this was kind of the first step we.
That's the seed money that the board decided to put out. It just makes sense, so. So your answer doesn't have an answer yet, but I think the concept would be fundraising at this point, and we'll see where that goes.
And the theater commission and has been talking about this effort, not to be led by us.
But I mean, there's a number of areas that could work together, so just to try to raise.
Not to be led by us, but to be led by a group, I mean, we could play this, this order to their effort.
Is there any, I'm sorry. Is there any grant money, wasn't there a sidewalk or an improvement?
Oh, yeah, that's on there right here.
But that's on the same, that's on the far.
It's more on the, on the corner of, of North Ferris and Main Street.
Right.
So out by the corner as opposed to directly in front. So what we're, we're trying to do is make sure that whatever is done with, with some of that front work, sidewalk area work, that it doesn't, that there's no wasted effort in what we're doing there. So we're not, we're not over committing to an entrance being in any particular location.
So John, you got to work on this corner.
We already have, we already have a team.
So that's actually one of the benefits of moving, like, what we were showing earlier, that work really should have been, you know, stop. If you were going to pursue the one on the west side, it wouldn't have really coordinated, and you may, you may have ended up redoing stuff on that side. With this entrance, I don't really think there's the same.
We're sticking, yeah, our, the improvements are primarily focused in front of this building. The sidewalk improvements and the plaza area is focused in front of this building, not necessarily wrapping around all the way to the side entrance where the theater is now. So, again, we're, I don't think, I.
There's a better chance that it's a good, that there would be.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the thing is, we're taking care not to waste effort by committing to one side of the building or the other until this, until this plays out. And chances are, this won't play out fully in time to do those other improvements, but again, our money's being focused out by the Main Street corner area and the front of the building, so.
The theater plaza, this theater vicinity was the grant, and it's certainly still the theater vicinity, kind of coming around here and here.
It all still works.
It's definitely.
So John, I have one question. First floor, is this a raised structure or is that something about a, a gym alleyway? So does that, is there something, go back to the first floor.
Go back.
Yeah. Is, what, it looks like there's something that's there existing that connects into the side of the gym building.
You know, I don't know if we can end up maintaining that connection. It actually stops at a retaining wall there, it doesn't actually have the connection.
I don't know what's happening, is this interested?
Yeah. I mean, I think honestly, what's in that corner is a lot of rock. I think probably right about here, the ledge rock is starting to show up. So to the extent that they made this connection, we were just sort of assuming that we wouldn't want to try to put a lot more basic.
I was talking more about.
You're thinking about this connection, whether that.
Where it goes.
Yeah.
No, there is a, that retain, where you see the existing retaining wall, it, it, it really, the existing on the east side, John, along, along the side of the building, the existing stone retaining wall there, that pretty much continues right up to the gym.
Right, that's not wrong. This goes like that, it meets the gym, so there's no way from this point here, what this gym alleyway does is there's an egress doors at the gym here, that you can out that way.
So that's like, so, so this is sitting on top of that?
Right, you'd have to be able to make that work, you have to maintain egress underneath it.
Now, the main, the main entrance, as this is conceived, the main entrance to the theater would be pretty much one story of the lowest level of the.
It's just a sharp three in it, right?
Yeah. This is just sort of, you know, not really developed, but you would, I think there's doors right here, so you'd have to either allow them to get outside there, or you'd have to give them an egress.
You know, they can't go east anyway if they were to exit the gym at that point because they're retaining wall.
Got it, yeah.
So I think what, what we were looking for here was whether it would be appropriate to show this to the school.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think November, sometime in November has been tentatively earmarked for an appearance in front of the Board of Education. They would only do that, of course, if you are nodding your head that this is something you'd like to pursue, so essentially, yeah, I guess that's the answer, so.
Don't you also solve some of the problem of the different uses over here? There's the police entrance and the court entrance, and there are a lot of like conflicting uses on this western side, the Ferris Street side. Whereas over here, you're not conflicting with all those other uses.
Right, and then also just the way that the emergency, like you have police cars, everything is always going to be blocked, like unless you clear that area out, it really, because, you know, this, this rendering that we did is a real wishful condition, right? Like, everything's all out of the way.
The police need their entrance, the police need their safety things, the court needs the this and the this and the this and the this.
It just takes a lot of, there's a lot of pressure on that side right now, and it would take it off. And, you know, really the crowd, the occupancy load associated with the theater is really big, you know, like it, it should have a big enough breakout space both inside, but then also outside, like, this is a more appropriate kind of outdoor breakout space. Anything we could do on the other side, there's just no way to do it. You're always going to have people on the street.
The small theater experience has a lot to do with the gathering together and people talking before and after, it's kind of hard to do with that little crunchy space up there. This lends itself to that outdoor gathering and indoor as well. I think if, if, if it makes the theater an experience, you know, you come as an experience, not just the show.
Right.
I think that would definitely do that.
Then we can do a line item for the, you know, the banquet hall with the western view on top of the roof of the gym. Raise that money, go, oh.
Well, I, having spoken to the theater commission over the last year or so, you know, thinking about this project and thinking about, you know, skilled people to be involved in fundraising, I think they are quite committed to, you know, expanding the experience of the theater, so I personally think this was a lovely idea.
Yeah, thanks for listening. I told Larry too, if you guys wanted me to come up and sit in here in the Board of Ed meetings and throw the full weight of the Board of Justice behind you, I'd be happy to do that.
Sign him up when I think that word again.
Oh, Chad, that's you too.
The other thing that I know Larry spoke to, is like, we're not asking for approval at this point from the board. We're just trying to figure out.
Trying to get an opinion, so if they look you in the eye, it would be better than them looking at us.
Sure.
I can hold a laser pointer.
We want to be able to focus our time, and to Larry's point, on the feasibility study on one side or the other.
Right.
Exactly. If they say, you know, you can't have any more property, then.
Yeah, we have your answer, yeah.
And we still have a nice little drawing for that sense.
Yeah, exactly, right. We'll just ignore all the bad things you said.
I mean, you're presenting this as educational use here. I mean, even this little area here, it's kind of outdoor classroom, that's a very.
I, you know, I don't think it was an arg, I mean, I think they were really positive about it. It's not like it was a.
Yeah, listen, there's, there's things in that area of their campus that can be improved, and they know it. And I think that they know we can work together on it to get those things improved. What they are, I can't list out for you, but they, they had a sense that there's things that they'd like to do there. Having the outdoor space is great, maybe there's some security issues we can address, maybe there's a connection issues we can address, maybe there's ADA issues we can address, a whole series of things.
Maintenance.
Exactly, so, right, exactly, maintenance as well. So there's, you know, there's ways we, we can work together, it'll be beneficial for both. And that's been the tenor of the conversations.
One of our celebrate Irvington days, we had some of the, the young violinists and cellists were playing right near the edge of the building, nearby the sidewalk, and they were kind of crunched in there next to the poison ivy. It, it struck me that if there was just, you know, it's such a lovely place for performances like that, where people on the street can see the kids performing for it also, but it's, it's a, it's a great spot with a lot of potential.
It benefits the larger community, not just school and theater related, but.
It's intergenerational and.
No, it's, it's a gathering.
You know, when's that Board of Ed meeting?
Yes.
It's your attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, to any, except if you guys could attend, I would be great, I think.
What's, what's it named? I'll try to come.
I, I have, I have to look, I know I made notes about it.
Just forward it at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just a day.
Yeah, I will, sure.
I think that's the quickest way to come together, right? If you were ever.
It's the second of the Board of Education meetings, whatever, he said it's a Tuesday, I think they have two in a month.
Right.
So it's the second of them.
In November.
November. Maybe 18th, something like that.
Some of you seem to want to go, just make sure that if you go that you post it, that you're going.
Oh, right, if there's more than.
Yeah, because you don't want to say to the school, this, we can't talk about, we can't talk business, you know, if you're going, so just post it, so you don't find the whole meeting. It sounds like there's a lot of interest.
The old days.
Yeah, we were very encouraged in our meetings and so.
Yeah, that's why they're here.
Looks like it's November 21st.
It's all tentative, but, you know, we'll confirm all that, of course.
It's a Tuesday before Thanksgiving. The other, their first meeting's on election day, so.
Yep.
Thanks, guys. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Oh, you got another award? We've got another award. They're just coming out of the east side now. Beautiful.
It's from the American.
Try, tell me something.
Yeah, it's a.
I didn't want to.
Yes.
Here's another award, this is from there.
Goes to the.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So I can say that now we're.
Well, if you would.
Very cool.
All right, well, this one, let's try to be thoughtful, the other one, the other one was.
See the letter. Thank you. Next item is review of partnership design proposed by Astoria Properties relocated adjacent to 50 South Buckout Street.
Can somebody on the boards quickly let us know what the format of this meeting was because it's the last one.
This is a work session, which means that this is, this is for the people up here to work.
Okay, so there's no opportunity to express opposition to the.
No, there would be a public meeting for that, and, at a regular meeting, yeah. Work sessions are typically just for the people that, again, it was the first time we've seen the plan, so we get, we need to hear it, and then we'll have another, there'd There'd be multiple public hearings if anything were ever to stage.
Just one more question, typically how many work sessions are there before publishing?
Work sessions?
Yeah.
As many as we need to kind of be comfortable with what's going on. We never meet in private, so any meetings we have are like this.
Great, that's good. And the goal of the work session?
Just to hear the presentation, really, because we haven't seen it, I know we got the, because we got a copy of it on Monday or Tuesday.
Just the print and PDF.
Yeah, we have the PDF, and then today we're hearing for the first time with everyone else.
Thank you.
You can start, I'm going to take my screen saver.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Andrew Tong from Denny Tong, Chulabi, White Plains, here with Bill Thompson. We've made a series of layout and landscape revisions to our plan based on the comments we heard at the August work session. I wanted, just wanted to go through them with you to see if they reflected your understanding or your thoughts, or if you had further thoughts, we'd be happy to take those as well. One of the questions was raised about the larger context of the sidewalks along South Buckout. So we enlarged our aerial photo to diametrically show the location of those sidewalks. They're shown in orange along South Buckout, that's going from south to north. Our, the 50 South Buckout building is in the middle right, and the area, the proposed parking lot is just the lower left of that. So the orange connotes existing sidewalks. They run on both sides of South Buckout, fronting on the Half Moon Co-op Apartments. On the east side, they run all the way up across the page and further north. On the west side, they stop just short of the two single-family residences to the south of the parking lot site, and they do not run along most of the parking lot and the South Buckout Street frontage. What we are proposing now is in the red, slightly different than what we did last time, based on this information and based on some of the discussion that happened last time. Is this, can I enlarge this? Yeah, terrific. So this shows that a little, pretty good. Yeah, shows us that where there are no sidewalks today, and looking at Mr. Greenberg's house, which is directly to the south of the proposed parking lot site, and his neighbor, it seemed unlikely with the front yard landscaping and the elements that are there, that that, there would ever be a sidewalk put in there, because it doesn't look like there's enough space without disturbing those two front yards. And so a question was raised, does it make sense to bring that sidewalk in front of the parking lot all the way down to those two houses if you can't really go anywhere? So what we decided instead to propose is that we would start about in the middle of the lot, which happens to be where the sidewalk on the east side follows the spur, if you will, that goes along the east, and rises in elevation slightly. So if I'm walking to the train, I'm late, I'm unlikely to go up the sidewalk to the east. So we've proposed a diagonal crossing there and then picking up the sidewalk running along 50 South Buckout down to the station. What that does is that gives us a little bit more room for buffer planting on the, on the south side, southeast side of the parking lot.
I think we're moving as much crosswalk that's close to.
Yes, we're moving that other crosswalk, but I'll get to that in just a moment, yeah. So we also did some other layout changes to basically optimize the planting opportunities along each side of the parking lot. So along the South Buckout frontage, the first half, now we're widened to about 10 feet, nine and a half foot minimum at the pinch point, actually. So we have 12 feet at the far left side, nine and a half feet, 10 feet where the sidewalk starts, and then it gets wider because the roadway curves away. Little pinch point at, you can see just where the spaces bump out at seven and a half, but on either side it widens there. So we think that gives us an opportunity to do a more layered informal planting rather than just the street trees that had been previously shown. On the south side, we pulled back the south end about seven feet to provide for a buffer planting strip that's on this side, on the north side of the utility easement. Utility easement has to be, remain treeless, can have ground vegetation, but it can't be treeed, so we have now room to plant primarily evergreen trees along the, along the south end. And then following up, I think on a suggestion that we heard, on the west side, we bumped out the retaining wall where it fronts on South Astor to create a five-foot planting strip there at the parking lot level, and also would propose planting there. So we fiddled a little with the layout, which we have now three spaces fewer than we had previously, 46 standard spaces plus three tandem spaces down here, down to 49, but we think that that's a good way to optimize or maximize the planting space that's available.
And I don't remember if you talked before, the tandem spaces, who would be lucky to get those?
I think there are tenants that would be happy to pay for second space.
I mean, they would be okay with having, blocking.
Yeah, there's a number of my tenants will keep the commercial vehicles there. You know, often that has trucks that they can bury, and a driver could do a switch in the morning, he could put his car in, and the truck he'd watch for the day. It works well.
So this is, what we've done is to propose a mix of flowering and evergreen and woodland trees. There are wires that remain on the, on the street just above the curb, so we can't put large trees along that area. But the idea would be to mix them to get a less formal arrangement. We've shown representative species and sizes. If we were to get to a planning, site plan approval review, then we would certainly take a look at that with the, with the village. And these are just some of the trees that we've selected at this point. Again, softer look to provide more of a screen, more of an interest in summer and in winter. So here's our cross section, that's being expanded a little bit more to show from left to right, going from South Buckout down towards the river, beginning at South Buckout and car parked along the side, those cars would remain parked. An existing utility pole with a Cobra head streetlight that's about 18 or 20 feet above the surface. There would be a four-foot-six concrete walkway and then a buffer planting strip. Retaining wall creates the level area for the parking air, for the parking spaces, that's about 10 feet generally below the level of South Buckout adjacent. So as you're driving down or walking down South Buckout, you would not see the cars for the most part, especially with the, because both of the elevation and the buffer planting. On the other side, then you see the other five-foot planting strip and then the retaining wall which drops down to grade. We would provide stormwater management through a system of previous paving along the backside of the lot and collect that in retention pipes that ran, run the length of the, of the parking area.
The lighting fixtures for the, within the parking lot, what kind of design are those? Would that light just go down? Would it reflect back up?
Yes.
How visible would the light be from the street and neighboring houses?
We proposed four lamps, light fixtures on the South Buckout side. They would be, at the moment, we've proposed similar in appearance and function to the ones that are on the train station platform, the Shepherd's Crook with the complete downlight, is an LED downlight with a house side shield on the east side, so it would throw no light back towards the, towards the east. And because it's set at the ground level or the level of the parking, which is about 10 feet below, the level of light fixture is about six or eight feet above the surface of the roadway adjacent, and underneath, if you will, the Cobra, Cobras that are currently along South Buckout.
Mr. Tong, do you have or can you get a view from the sidewalk on the east side of Buckout that's raised up in that same angle? In other words, I guess, you know, where is this sidewalk? In other words, this sidewalk is leveled here, so how much higher up is that sidewalk?
Well, it's at the south end of the lot, it's pretty much the same.
I think the windows of the houses is the there against there.
So it's level here, it doesn't start to rise until you get in here. So it's really just a stretch there. So these are views that we showed last time of what it would look like, they're kind of before and after shots. This is looking down South Buckout. The existing drive that passes down the south side of 50 would be used for access to the slot, and you would go down about 50 feet and then turn left, so that gives you a sense of the elevation dropping away as you go onto the parking lot level. And you can see the two South Astor building, the white building, partially there. And so when that woodland is removed and the new buffer planting installed, it is more open certainly than it is today, but the, the view is because the parking lot being depressed, will not be of the parking lot except at the, this entry. As you're standing on the opposite sidewalk or at the opposite curb looking towards the river, today in the summer, it's pretty well blocked with the mixed vegetation. In the winter, it is more open because it's scrub growth, and you do see both to the river and to one astor, is the red brick building, and two astor is a little lower on the right, the white beyond that. So the idea with the mixed buffer planting is to provide for not a complete wall, but a, an interesting vegetative backdrop, which certainly cuts the view both in summer and winter to what's beyond. And the parking area is 10 feet below this, so unless you're standing at the edge looking over, you wouldn't normally see that. So the other elements in the, in the proposal are the continuation of the streetscape along the front of 50 South Buckout around down to the station. As you can see, the property line is quite tight to the building, both here and here, so any work out here is what we would propose, but we certainly need the cooperation and approval of the village to be able to do that. But I think that in order to provide for a, if you choose to walk in the sidewalk, some people will still walk in the street even when there are sidewalks, but this gives you an opportunity to do so in a better spot than you can today. We've proposed moving this, as we talked about last time, there's an existing crosswalk here, but in conjunction, if you just advanced that one more. Conjunction with providing a bump out here, which was suggested as a way of giving the espedes coming down station an opportunity to stand here and be able to see what's going on and cross, that would be a place to cross rather than moving it down here. Again, these are all proposals that we thought would help to calm the traffic in the area. The other component here is a at-grade cobblestone surface, cobbled surface that serves as a lane divider. This roadway appears fairly wide, especially when there's, when there's, not parked on either side, and people will tend to speed up. So this will slow people down, especially if they rumble over, they'll feel that texture, but you can still drive over it, you can still pile it, so it's not a race to beat.
So in terms of the west side of the parking that's shown, and then the sidewalk, are those parking spots in the same location they are now relative to, in other words, has the width of the street?
No, we've maintained the curb line.
That's what I'm asking, thank you.
So we didn't, we didn't change that. We had to adjust parking spaces slightly in order to add the crosswalk.
Right. And the loading dock stays in the same place?
The loading dock stays in the same place. We've been discussing how to manage that.
I was going to ask, because it seems like that bump out is going to make it even more difficult for, for larger trucks to be getting into that loading dock.
We continue to push our tenants to bring smaller trucks, and we've also, we're in conversation now, we think that the answer is to make them provide a flagman if they have a large truck that comes.
That makes sense. I've noticed lately, a lot of smaller, a lot of like 20-foot or so trucks are maybe 30-foot at the most.
I'm two years into the argument with them, trying to push them to smaller trucks.
A lot smaller trucks, average, I don't see the big ones as much anymore.
One company that refuses. It's not, it's not my tenant that is refusing, it's the delivery company that's refusing to.
Yeah, so the flagman would be appropriate.
Yeah, we'll try and keep doing, keep doing what we do. I don't like it either.
Flagman out there, no.
Could do that.
I wanted to go back to the picture of the whole plot, of the very last section before Mr. Greenberg's house, is that, beyond the green, yes, that, that's right, magic touch. Yeah, that. Explain that to me again.
There's a utility easement for a gas line and a water and sewer line that serve one astor for them to get up to South Buckout. So that was, that's been there for some time.
And there's also a pretty steep grade change right in there, right toward the river?
At the west side is a grade change, it drops off to the back of one astor.
So what you said is it can't be trees because the.
Can't be trees because of the roots.
Roots affected, but if, it can just be green and ground.
Yes, yes. Right now it's mostly leaf cover because it's not been maintained, but it could be ground cover.
Shrubs, I don't know.
You know, medium shrubs, you don't want anything with deep roots.
What's, I mean, that's to be safe for later discussion, but what's, what's deep roots in that sense? What's the depth that we're talking about that that stuff is running, do you know?
I don't know where it actually runs. Generally, the, we could see what the utility easement says, but my engineers will tell me that you don't want to plant on top of utilities if you can avoid it. But we can find out where the utilities are and see if that's.
We have a bump out. We're going to try and stay to the north side of it. That's where the tree line is, is to the north of it.
You know, typically you wouldn't need a 20-foot width for utility easement, you know, 10 or 15 is what kind of, if there's an opportunity to do planting in some of that area, then.
We might be able to plant more to the further south against, towards Mr. Greenberg's property.
That's true. I know with a lot of, with a lot of.
Do the utilities companies do any of that maintenance of the, do they come in?
No, they just want it available.
But now as, you know, this area really hasn't been maintained in its current, for its current use, but now as part of this, this landscape would be maintained, and so that area could be maintained as well.
Is there any further discussion about the use of two east, what's the address, Astor Street, two South Astor Street, its current uses is continued, will continue?
They're locked in for 10 years. Nine for now.
I like the additional, you know, vegetation put at the, at the south part of it. I think, you know, to me, if we could almost have, you know, two more spots go and have, you know, kind of almost double that tree line there, I think that that helps because A, you get, you know, it takes up some of the additional houses are kind of looking at that, and I think is Mr. Greenberg's more shielding again. I know you've taken out a couple spots already, but with tandem spots.
I do believe that. We might be able to do that.
Yeah.
As long as it wasn't.
Yeah, we can, let it make it, you know, I don't like.
But that could make sense. Did you have a perspective of the effect of the trees on the far east end to help to hide two South Astor, what that was going to look like?
It's.
And how feasible is it putting trees into that retaining wall or whatever that, to have them actually survive?
Yeah, it's, we put appropriate earth in there, dirt in there so that they would be able to grow, so I don't think that's a survival issue. I think it was to, it was, we can't really hide that building, and in the, in the winter you see it today. It's to give a little bit of middle ground greenery to an area that doesn't really have much greenery today.
You could get some sort of a look on it when you're looking from the north, to the southwest, if you want to go back to that. Yeah, that's the next one.
The next one?
Yeah.
That one? Is it ever being shown as like very young growth, right?
Yes, yes, we don't wanna over, you know, we can, we can.
Overpropose.
No, you don't wanna overplant the, you don't wanna overplant them because the, the trees will.
Do you guys think we're, we want to live long enough to get?
Yes. Live long enough.
We tried to dress all the concerns you had last time. Have we, have we fulfilled that? Hold short.
Well, the, Mark usually bring up the maintenance of the, the trees and the shrubs and the types that there are, but that would be your responsibility, I guess, you're.
Yeah, our landscaper would do that.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not that the village has to have a watering truck come around or anything, it's.
If we're gonna, we're gonna build it, we're gonna make it water.
Yeah.
Make a tenant.
I mean, you know, it's all conceptual, obviously you'll have, if, if this goes forward, you're gonna have to go through this with the planning board and the landscape architect, you know, the puppy. Suggest a lot of adjustments, just because that's the way things go.
You know, we're, I would say we're open on that, on the planning.
What was your point, Mark?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking to you, so I just said, you know, it's not, the, the planting here is just conceptual right now, it's like.
But I, I certainly, to answer your, your question, your comment, I certainly think you responded to our concerns last time that giving a lot more cover and it's a, a more attractive plan. I guess the real key issue is going to be the neighbors, and that's why I was asking about the lighting. How much visibility will there be into the parking lot? How effectively does the planting shield the parking lot, um, from the immediate neighbors?
The, well, we believe that the combination of primarily the photography, that's the drop in elevation, uh, and, uh, the vegetation will help to block views to the, to the parking surface and to the light that spills on that surface. But the, you know, and I believe there are only two or maybe three Cobra Heads along that frontage, but the streetlights that you see now from the, uh, second story of the, and perhaps first story of the houses on the east side will be more, uh, visible than the downlights, uh, on the parking area further to the west.
Okay, that, that's, that's important.
It's a goose neck dome that sits, the backside of the dome, what we call the west side of, the east side of the, of the dome will have a shield on it. Then we'll.
Uh, this, there are different types of light distribution that you can get, depending on where your light fixture sits relative to where you wanna throw. And you can also, what we propose is get something called a house side side shield, which basically blocks the house side from any of the light throws. So the light throw is going down only on this one side to light both sides. The Cobra Head is going down and will to light the street. So if you're on the second story up here, you're probably gonna see the Cobra Head before you see what's further on that mower.
And do the lights stay on all night or would they be turned off?
I love turning them off.
The streetlights stay on?
Oh, you don't see, no, miss.
Streetlights, oh, you know, we turn them off at, at Bridge Street at the last train. Um, I imagine we do the same.
So if you are on the second floor of a house on the east side of South Buckout and you look down, is there any way you can take your pen and, and make it look like that, what that view is? Like, can that person look out their window and see the parking lot or?
I think you can see if, if it was, uh, you know, if there's no tree or anything else in the way, I think we can see the far side of the parking lot from some of the secondary stories.
Without trees.
Without trees.
And you think they would hear the parking lot and the cars?
To me, that's one thing that maybe, I don't recall if we asked for that, but it seems something I remember a discussion about whether or not there was any way to get a view that would be like from a second story from the houses on the east side, so.
Uh, we could, we could, you know, let, raise a viewpoint to see what that is. I think from the, from the section, you know, if we were to add, oops.
I'm not even thinking about the section, I'm thinking more about the rendered elevation, kind of, you know, to see what you're.
So to look at this from above, from higher up?
We, we can see what they're gonna see.
Well, you'll see more of the, uh, the buildings beyond. The one, 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 uh, South Astor and two South Astor. And in front of that, you'll see a little bit of a, of a parked car.
So overall, given the different seasons, I don't know if it's a, do you, do you see less of the river now from either the street or the houses than, right, so there you do, given the strange.
Yeah, in the winter now, you do see through this site to the river.
Right.
Or to the buildings beyond.
So in order to.
In the summer, uh, with the new planting, some of it's evergreen, so you will, some of it will be blocked. But we didn't wanna, I, I don't like complete evergreen screens unless you, because there's, you know, interesting things to see beyond, so.
So, so you'll see less of the river because of the plantings that are aimed at.
I think it depends, depends where you are. It's not, it's not a complete, uh, you know, block by any means. It's to filter and to, to, to filter the view, I think is the best.
I mean, you can create essentially interest views corridors where you put deciduous stuff. So in the wintertime, when the leaf's gone, you'll still have like the corner view through to the, uh, to the river or whatever it's on, on the edges of the building.
And that's what we try to do here, conceptually.
Between evergreens and, uh, and deciduous is kind of a key.
So that's why we, we come here conceptually with the darker trees being evergreen and a lot of trees being, being woodland. So you can see through at various points. And certainly that can be, uh, you know, that's, that's, we, we design it on paper, but it's really placed in the field from, uh, while looking at it from all various points.
How about, not so much the conceptual design, but from, say, the current occupancy of the building, um, kind of maximum occupancy, if even, say, different uses, if you went to more office uses or something. You know, how many, what's the kind of maximum car demand? What do you kinda have parking for now? And how does just like, how does the forty-nine spots fit into that whole puzzle?
It doesn't give us enough, um, we still, you know, and it's also fungible, if you will. As tenants grow and shrink and, you know, the different tenancy, um, that we bring in, we're, we're trying to put somebody in three thousand foot space now that there's one person in it, uh, it's an artist. And, you know, we love those. You know, he's got a good deal.
So he doesn't deliver big canvases.
Actually, he does start to sell himself. So, yeah. But, yeah, so we, you can't guarantee that we're gonna continue to get those. Um, you know, we look for low-density tenants and, you know, that's our, that's one of the things that we pride ourselves on, and we don't, we don't take high-density people. So as far as the parking goes, you know, we very much try to land how much we give. We, uh, I think forty-nine spaces now, um, would give us, would have a serious impact on, on, you know, reduction in the parking in there, but we don't, we don't have people waiting to take those spaces. It would be existing tenants that we're moving into them. I don't have, you know, a tenant that's coming in with thirty-five cars that are gonna suck it up and you're gonna have the same problem, if that's what you're asking about.
How many did you lose again from the, uh, the trip?
It looks like that we've, um, we've won the battle with EPO.
Do you have any tenants from Astor Buck who are parking in Bridge Street parking spaces?
We have one.
And is there room to allow any?
They don't, they don't, they're allowed, but they don't park there.
Is there room in that lot, do you think, in a normal day for?
Um, yes and no, but it's, it's disimilar ownership, so we can't. I can't make a commitment between the two properties.
Lieutenant of Parking, 'cause I have one question. Mark, did you have more you wanted to ask about parking?
I had, you know, a general parking question about, but I think I shared it with the board and we talked about it. We were talking about it tonight. I was waiting for the general discussion because this is more about, you know, the kind of seeker stuff we'd have to do for the zoning change. So it's not necessarily impacted you directly, uh, it's anything you can do, but it's more like, you know, the framework of the analysis. So if we do, should we stop at that now or do you wanna?
Well, wait a minute, I, 'cause I have a question on this. On the, on the retaining wall, is the retaining wall you're gonna be creating on the, uh, west side, right?
Close on the west and east to create the level area.
Well, it is a pretty deep one on the west side.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, did you do any renderings of what it's gonna look like from?
From the backside of?
From the transition, I don't know, I can't picture what's on the other side.
You really won't be able to see it because it's blocked by, uh, two buildings.
Show me the.
Right. The, the new wall is here.
I see.
You can't see it because it's blocked by.
Okay.
Except for one little alleyway. And there is an existing wall there right out behind.
There's a wall behind one South Astor.
Yeah, that's, that sort of steps down.
If, if someone's looking at the change, though, Mark, we have an idea on how to, uh, do that without changing, changing the zone and just preventing the existing zone.
Now, I'm talking about the seeker itself, the, the analysis of what the impact of the zoning change is.
Yeah, well, we might have to change the zone.
Of this zoning change or the, the second zoning change that you're talking about this evening?
This one.
Yes, this one. Uh, yeah, I could address that briefly if you would. The, the original petition was requested changing this lot for the parking to a B zone, which is the same as. Which is the same as the existing buildings on the site. So the proposal was to change this gray area to B zone. And comments that I read from the initial review was, well, that means you could open that up for a lot of other uses besides parking. So we had two thoughts as to how that could be restricted basically to parking. Um, one relates to this strip of land which is owned by the village, which would be, which would have to be part of this proposal. The village and whoever that, um, was permitted to be, whether it was leased or, or sold, if that's possible, would have control over, uh, what would happen here. And you give them a zone in the village, the, uh, the two F zone, which is two-family zone, this is a one-family zone, which allows all the uses of, in the one-family zone, plus three additional uses, which happen to be private parking lots, uh, two-family dwellings and clubs and fraternal organizations. And then why? So as part of the agreement, whatever agreement this is, one way I can see is that if this was changed to a two-F zone, the village could restrict that use only to the private parking and not permitted to family home or a fraternal organization, none of which they wanna build anymore. So that means that all the other B uses wouldn't be added to what's possible here, but only the, the parking. The second, second, I'll find it.
I'm missing something here. Why would it be any different than if you could do, if you could rezone it to up and say, the only use you can have here is a parking garage, you could do the same thing if you did it big, say, if it's business, but.
You, you could, but it's a bigger.
Okay.
It's a bigger universe that you would restrict. You're, you're absolutely right, you could do that as well. But this way, it's, you're starting small, all you're doing is.
Limiting fraternal organizations.
And it's also, there might be a, a different sense from the neighbors that it's now called two-F instead, I don't know, that's, that's a name only, but it's, it's not a business zone.
It's a, right, it maintains residential.
It's a residential, it's a type of residential zone.
There's, there's another way that, uh, we've used in, uh, White Plains and Mount Pleasant, where they have a provision that allows for accessory parking to a business use as a permitted use within an adjacent single-family zone. And that's to allow for a recognition that zoning is not perfect, the lines are not perfect, and sometimes there are parcels just outside a business zone that under careful review can be perfectly used for parking. Now, you get to the same place, so it doesn't really, I think if, if this isn't made, this is an appropriate, uh, use for this site as posed with all the various components, then there would be a way, uh, to make a zone change as simply as possible. I think that would be our, our intent. And it seemed like trying to rezone it to B was not the simplest way to go. Your call.
What? I have something I'll discuss with.
Yeah, right, I'm careful, yeah.
But Mark, none of that, though, concludes what Mark's saying. In any event, it requires the zoning then, that whether it's a zone change, zoning then, it still needs to stay to go to secret. Yeah, and we, we actually started the secret process on this. We've already declared ourselves, we, an agency, we circulated the notice and stuff. And we were at the point where, and we decided, rather than requiring here, I guess, it's pretty limited, we could identify what the issues, what the environmental issues are gonna be. It may be traffic, it may wanna be visual, um, it might be engineering, and that we would require studies of all of those things. And, 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 I mean, but it didn't make sense to study it until you kind of settled on what the plan was going to be. If you're comfortable with the plan, then it makes sense to have the engineers look at it, make sure it works engineering-wise, have a traffic person, um, come in and look at it for traffic circulation. Is it gonna, you know, is it more parking spaces, is it gonna mean there's more park, traffic coming in along the streets?
Right, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a traffic magnet, that's my concern. And looking at the traffic, obviously, you gotta look at South Astor and South Buckout all the way to Main Street, I mean, those corridors.
Yeah, well.
And station, because those are the feeders for where people will be, you know, streaming into the parking.
Well, you'll direct your traffic person to do that. And then, and then the other one would be, um, you know, the, the visual impact. And then we'll get somebody, one person to do the analysis, the visual.
It's been mentioned a couple of times by the residents that concerned about, you know, uh, the visual impact of noise and light as well, so that, so there's some of those environmental things that probably are not as extensive as a full EIS, but we still have to probably think about that.
Right, we agree with that. But it's insisted and real concern.
Now, there's been, I don't know, this is close related, maybe it doesn't matter, but there's been discussion of the block, um, between Main and, um, uh, per Astor Park, per Park, to make it one-way. When we discussed in general the plan for that area, does that have any impact? Did we did that or didn't do that based on all this discussion? Would it matter?
Which, which section?
Well, when you, Main Street to.
North of here.
North of here? I, I wouldn't think so.
So if there was a person studying traffic, for example, if he said, well, what if we made this one-way? Does that change your analysis?
Would it change? The suggestion is from, from where South Astor intersects with South Buckout, north to Main Street, is to make that section one-way. I can't tell you which direction, I just figured that out.
It's been discussed periodically, seriously.
Yeah, so we change the circulation somewhat there.
That's a great idea, Larry, that's a great idea. I've had too many close calls on that.
We all have, we all.
You can't really.
You need, you need the bigger picture to see what we're talking about.
If you go about, but. In such a turn of how this. What you're talking about, how you exit from the parking?
Yeah, how this parking, how this circulation works here.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Yeah, big, yes.
So right now, people are coming to park at Fifty South Buckout, have to enter here. They go in here, or they go in here, and they have to exit here. So to get to the parking lot.
So to get to the parking lot, this, the people would come in here, and they would also exit here. So the circulation is basically the same as it would be when you tried to park.
But I think when we're talking about the concern is overall in terms of the, if the traffic person looks at it and sees that, you know, as a parking magnet, let's say a traffic magnet for parking, you know, if it makes sense, the impacts to the neighborhoods and to the traffic flow and safety, whether that section of South Buckout should be aligned in one direction or the other. And, you know, depending who you talk to, there's lots of good arguments for one direction or the other.
It's almost like that, the analysis of the one-way question is almost dependent, should take into account their circulation around the building, as opposed to the other way around, which is the way you asked the question, or maybe where you brought it up.
But I think, when you look at it, it has to be seen as.
That was my point to make. Add it into that.
But it's more about the decision-making on the one-way as opposed to their decision-making.
Right, because their flow is their flow, I understand.
Right, that doesn't change, like you said.
So Marion, you were saying, we're the lead agency on a sequo analysis of a limited portion that would include traffic and then you.
No, 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 your secret analysis is of the entire project. So you can't, you, you just have to look at the entire project, you'll conduct the sequel. In the course of that, I mean, you'll get input from the planning board, you'll get input from, from all the boards. In fact, that's another thing you should do once you settle on your proposal. It has already been referred to the planning board, I think a couple of times, because as any zone change, yeah, said that you shouldn't, you don't have a report. So you do the secret analysis on the whole project, and no action can be taken until you've completed sequence. So let's say at the end of it, you say, they satisfied all our concerns, we don't think there's going to be any significant environmental impacts, then you can make your decision on whatever zoning change you're going to make. So if then, then, once you make the zoning change, let's say you say they need a special permit, one of the suggestions on the end of it, they need a special permit, hold on, it would go to the planning board for the special permit. In any event, it's going to have to go to the plan for, for site plan review. Let's, let's say you don't, and you, you sell the parcel, you decide to do it, and you rezone it, let's just say you rezone it business, and you put a covenant on the land in connection with the sale, that it can't be used for anything but for parking, to the state for what, to their property. And they can go in that, then they've got to process it like any other application to go for site plan approval, and I'm not sure if it needs A.I.A. approval for site plan approval.
So it still goes to the planning board even?
It has to go to the planning board in any event, yeah.
So how, this gets back to the second question I had, which was, in the past, the planning board just sometimes felt that they've been handed a fait accompli, and.
So you guys do like.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, I'm talking, I'm talking to you, but I'm really talking to the whole board, because what happens is they feel like they don't have enough room to change. It's almost like we voted on the Strongman Plan, and that's a lock-in in some, some manner. I'm not sure that that's true, because we're a model that says, well, you know.
That's the point I was just getting at, we don't have the five percent. Well, you're using it, you're using it as a model to do your seeker review.
Yes.
So you're not, as we've said many times, you can't, you can't do a seeker analysis just on a zone change and say, well, it's only a change on paper, so there's no environmental impact. So you have to have something, a project, and that's what, yeah, so that's, so that's what this exercise is about. Now, the reality is.
Besides from the secret thing, also, you don't want to rezone for something that you're not going to like the end product of. So you can only do the rezoning if you think it's for something that's acceptable to you.
Yeah, no, no, that's basically it. So it definitely is a fine line between having an appearance that you're reviewing a project and doing a final review and approval of that project exactly the way it looks up on that screen right now.
I understand that. Way to communicate it once again to the planning board, so that they, they.
My scribble was, you know, after, you know, assuming we kind of, you know, get comfortable with the plan, soon as we do that, say, hey, guys, you know, we want your input the whole, you know, the whole way. Maybe even have, you know, the chairman come sit with us or something, you know, come try to have him go to our meetings. So he can say, hey, you know what, I think if you put that in, if you change that, you know, you're really tying your hands.
Right, that's what I want to hear ahead of time, right after the.
Exactly, exactly.
There's one other thing.
Just so you do know, I did send them a note, I did send them an email that this meeting was happening, but it was just, I think it was just yesterday.
So one other thing that I thought about in, for the seeker, do we need to have a condition of what, not what if nothing happens? If nothing happens, it's just wood and scrap land right now, but unused. The next question is, do we have to see what the case would be if it was developed to the current zoning? Though its current zoning is 1F5 or whatever it is. Do we have to see something to make a.
Well, I think what you're talking about is that, that, the various alternatives, which is part what you do if you're doing it for environmental reasons, if you're not doing it, you don't have to. You may want to for your own purposes, though, in, in the traffic, to see whether it makes any difference in the traffic. I mean, if, any question might, it might be relevant to it, so you're asking traffic person, how would this, how would this change the traffic generation if it were one family or.
So I think there's actually a second one, sorry, besides traffic. I think the one that sort of creeped up on me the other day is about losing the green buffer, but the question is, what would it actually look like if there were five condo, or five townhouses or whatever, whatever they could build in that lot? Or, I don't think it was five single-family residences, right? They had to be townhouses or something?
Well, there's like nine lots.
Anyway, so whatever it is, that's as of right for that zoning. Because it strikes me that you would lose the green space anyways, and then you'd have, you would have residential and housing, but what would that, what would that be like aesthetically, you know, to the neighbors?
Well, whoever you're doing, whoever's doing your visual analysis, you could ask them to do that comparison. It would, I don't think it would ordinarily be part of it, you could ask them, if that helps you make the decision, or helps you convince yourself that it's a good thing to do.
I think that might be helpful to residents as well, to see what that alternative would look like.
All right, well, whenever you retain the people, you, so you want them to do whatever studies you want.
Makes sense, thank you.
So, I mean, I guess, you know, today, we, again, we've seen this tonight, so I'd like to think about it more, see what questions we ask, see what questions the public has, you know, at the, at the meeting on Monday, say if they want to send letters or speak there, you know, and then figure out what, what the next steps are from there.
Well, that's right, Monday is the next public hearing, that's good, so it'll be close to this.
Public hearing, the next, it's the next public meeting.
A public meeting.
Next meeting.
Public meeting. Is this coming Monday?
Correct. And if someone can't make it, they can also send us an email or a letter. Okay, thank you. But I think that that's, I think, I mean, again, you know, we've seen a lot, it's changed quite a bit, digested some, come back, we have more questions, and then hear from the public as well.
I do have one more, puts this up here, I was just thinking about sidewalk ends, but there is no sidewalk in front of Mr. Greenberg's house and the other one right there. So is, if you, the expectation is you cross the street if you want to continue on the sidewalk, right?
Well, you don't have to, you can continue on the sidewalk that's already there.
That's, well, so let's say you're, you're traveling north on the west side, then your sidewalk ends, you need to cross to the east side to have a sidewalk.
Yeah, I might suggest that the village add crosswalks here.
Well, that's what I was about to say, isn't that then needing a crosswalk, if that's the, the overall.
I mean, that's, that's the current, at this point, you're going to cross something anyway.
Right, and right now, there is no striped crosswalk there, right, there's nothing here.
I was saying, I was saying, there's no cross, there's no cross, I mean, just no sidewalk in front of the parking lot or.
Right, now I just.
All there is is a little bit of sidewalk.
Right, right. Restaurant counter.
Just wondering if people would cross, or they would say, oh, I can, I can get back with the sidewalk here. Right now, I mean, as I recall, this is kind of, I don't want that that often, but I'm just, just thinking about what people you could.
There's no rational way to just.
Yeah, what's safe and what's, you know, you've also got school kids crossing there as well, so.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Send you this.
Do you think maybe you guys could try to come up with a second story?
Sure.
I mean, I don't want to.
It's not too hard, is it?
Except for the.
It's going to have that nominal size.
Yeah. You can review them. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Are we done with this?
Yeah. Next up, review of draft local revising zoning here, RZF, on the train station. Where we just left this off was, for our last meeting, and I guess it was the first public hearing, we had gotten feedback from two community groups, Hudson House as well as Lola. And, you know, we didn't have full time to really adjust at all because we got input that day, the day of the hearing. So here we are. Thank you.
Did you want me to?
Yeah, sure. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, Larry, you talked to me about, you know, you mark up what you drafted, you know, and to, you know, incorporate some of the things, but it seemed to me there were too many open questions, and the easier thing might be to go through the draft that the Hudson House provided us, and explain to you why I think certain things should be and not should be, and what things you guys need to decide. Okay, so on the first one in 22445, I think, I think that the sentence is, right, it's one sentence, that they suggest the added is, is good, I think that's fine, and that. On the, in the next paragraph C, where it says for property owned by the railroad and leased to property, I don't think it's a good idea to do that because it might not be owned by the railroad at some point, but it's still the building, so I think we still will, and whoever owned it, if it's that building we're trying to protect.
But it doesn't matter, we want to protect the building.
Exactly. And about the area around it, I have to see what Manchester, what Manchester lease, and I just asked Mr.
DeGeneres.
DeGeneres, I was going to say, engineer, DeGeneres, for, for a copy of the lease description of the property, so that should match with several in the lease, okay. Then, a little bit further on in that paragraph C.
Pardon? Now I understand, I couldn't read this, matches.
Yes, see what ma, see what matches.
Matches, lease, okay.
Yeah, I mean, these were two, well, you don't need to read all, I, you just know so you have a little bit better.
I tried, though. I couldn't get that one.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
And the, and the special permit in accordance with 224EAPNG, the E shouldn't be in there, it's mostly covered by AP, and G is the reservation provision, so it doesn't make sense, so it should be the way it is, just 224DAP. Okay, permitted uses, retail stores, art galleries, art galleries, you don't need to spell out separately, they're already included in retail stores, just like downtown in the business district, we don't spell out art galleries. And there's a risk in doing that, there's a real risk in making your districts inconsistent because if, let's say you said art galleries here, under zoning principles, it would mean if you don't have art galleries listed in the business district or anything, so art galleries would fit up under the retail stores. Okay, United States Post Office, I think that's probably a good thing to put in there, I don't think it needs including provisions for resident P.O. boxes, but U.S. Post Office, that makes sense to me. Okay, then the next one's a question for you, business administrative professional offices, but not medical offices. Do you want to say that, not medical offices? Seems to me that's a decision for you personally.
I mean, I, I think that medical offices typically, I mean, does Mr., if Mr. DeGeneres doesn't have any interest in them, then we'll definitely take them out. I don't think it's particularly a great use for there just because of the traffic turnover and that sort of thing, advice, but also not very practical for the, the space itself. So I don't know if it's a big deal to you about medical offices. If it is, then we can debate it, but.
I, I don't know. If you're trying to prove you might have something.
Our concern has been not only the amount of traffic, but the amount of turnover.
Yes, exactly.
That could change that area.
Yeah, it's one of the issues here with, with medical offices, the discussion broke, that if you think, thinking about like the Westman-type facilities, there's this ton of cars and constant turnovers, but this building is so small. You would be having.
Well, in addition to which, they couldn't have the medical unless they met the parking requirement.
Right, exactly.
And the parking requirement is one space for 200 square feet of office, oh, other than medical, oh, no, no, 100 square feet of medical and dental office space. So if they had, let's say, a thousand, you know, square feet, they'd need 10 parking spaces.
Which they, which they would have.
Well, when, assuming they, they built, yeah, right.
Yeah, but that would be, that would be it then.
So it would seem to me that the only thing that possibly accommodate would be a specialist or some relatively low traffic.
I guess something like an optical store is not, does that count as medical if that's an op.
Oh, beautiful area.
Does that count as, does that count as medical, or is that like sell glasses?
I don't know what an optician would be, but it's always, their examinations, because it could be a medical.
But if there were, then it would be.
Retail store.
Yeah.
Is it all right if I say something? I was just, I was just going to say, no, no, I think, I think it's appropriate in the, in the context of what we're trying to do here, which is, you know, you, you were interested in what Mr. DeGeneres' concerns are, you may want to hear what their concerns are, and then, and then you can sit here and do a little straw poll and decide what you want to decide.
I think the, I think the way.
Not for a silly issue.
That we make it not, not the public comment, why don't we call up the, you know, the representative of Repoa, the representative of the other side, and come sit with us, you know.
That's fine.
So Mr. DeGeneres, if you want to come up and join us. Man, this makes, this makes it easier to take.
We have one Hudson House and one up.
Sit here. I'll sit next to him.
Just have an arm or something.
I think this makes sense, again, at the literal table, at the bigger table.
Everybody's.
George Sheferdecker.
George, okay. Nicholas, yes, Nicholas, I didn't want to say, hey, you, George and Nicholas.
This is yours?
Sure.
So, on the issue of medical offices, you, you asked Mr. DeGeneres, you know, it sounds to me like he probably is not all that interested in eliminating this use, just out of, you know, in other words, keeping options open. So it would be interesting to hear what the potential concerns are of, well, Hudson House and obviously Repoa, but both here, so.
What we're concerned about is low-impact uses. You know, the, the uses that have been proposed are in line with how we think about the use of the building. But this is our one shot at making something that defines what this is going to be for the future, irrespective of what John Michael has in mind. So our thinking is that medical offices are potentially heavily traffic-use and easily abused in terms of amount of parking and traffic, and so we'd rather not see it. That's really the only thing, nothing about the medical use intrinsically, you know.
The one thing that I, we're talking about is, you know, how.
offices are potentially heavily traffic used and easily abused in terms of amount of parking and traffic and solely residential, that's really the only thing, nothing about the medical use intrinsically.
The one thing that I, we're talking about is, you know, how much traffic you get is gonna be based on how many clients you can have, and, you know, this doesn't seem like it's gonna be a Westmed kind of facility, because it's got 600 square feet, I mean, if that, I'm not sure what the, so it's gonna be limited.
Yeah, but you have a patient every 15 minutes.
Can I ask a question about, which comes a little later, about gross versus net, is the parking requirement based on space or net square foot of.
Yeah, we have to ask the building, the building department how we do it, it should be measured like it's measured over the place else, I don't know how he does it.
Because that's gonna make a big difference in terms of how you'll get.
What, what would you consider like a therapist or psychologist, or? Still lives on one patient at a time for an hour.
Well, arguably, a psychologist is a. Yeah, I get, take your point, I think just to frame this, it's obviously you folks want to have maximum limitations on it, understandable, you wanna live at this, you know, you wanna, you wanna work with Mr. DeGeneres, but you want to have maximum control of the impact this is gonna have and what uses, I think it's just worth saying that, so then what we're trying to do here is figure out what's reasonable in terms of achieving the goal of keeping this building viable.
Exactly.
Right.
I think we understand that through this special permit process, there'll be another level of consideration applied to it, but the point is to try to lay down a very clear directive so that a planning board understands what the zoning is about and what it's meant to do, what we're trying to have happen here, but for us, it's a monumental change. Yeah, it's been completely quiet down there, the only one thing happening is people going in and out of railroad station and post office that we probably use more than anybody else, so that's our concern.
I think we have to have kind of, to my mind, based on this conversation, you know, have, I wanna say low impact, but low overhead and something that in terms of, something about therapists or acupuncturists or something like that, sounds to me like, actually, a pretty good use down there, we're talking about people coming, you know, 45 minutes or hour for a session, and it would require fairly low overhead in terms of any kind of modification internally to the building and stuff like that, now, I think it's probably different if, you know, you were gonna open up your office and.
Well, I just don't identify that, I mean, as soon as you say yes to medical office, it could be a mill. So.
It's the concern, you know, like a blood drawn facility where people are literally coming in, having something done and going out.
And no question services, question diagnosis.
Question diagnosis, thank you.
And I also think it's, you know, like, I don't think you'd know necessarily, if you said if you wanna convert it to a medical office, you wouldn't even know potentially who your tenant was, I mean, you might, but we might not know exactly.
Professional services, I mean, is an acupuncturist a professional service, is a, you know, where is the lines between a business psychologist, a professional service, not a medical service?
I would say psychologist is not medical, but then what's the difference between psychologist and psychiatrist? Psychiatrist is.
So, so then it comes back to, do the other controls.
Control it, yeah.
Do the other controls of parking and, and such, and the other controls we've looked into uses, does that, is that sufficient so that it would only attract the therapist or the acupuncturist and not the, you know, every 15 minute appointment, I don't know, I think that's the issue though, do the, do the other ways we have control, the use of the building sufficient to control this use, and not to exclude what might be a viable and very quiet?
No, I, no, I don't think that we would object to an acupuncturist.
You know, or a therapist.
Right, so that's.
Also relatively private and quiet for people wanting to access those services.
I sort of, I look at it and I think that that's arguable within the context of the comments that we made, where you could, you could exclude medical office and you could allow an acupuncturist with.
Then you're excluding except for, so you're doing an exceptions to exclusions.
No, I meant, I think you could argue that that use is covered in here with, as you've said.
Professional.
Professional service or professional office.
So there are massage therapy, there's, you know, there's acupuncture, there's.
There's massage therapy, isn't there?
Okay.
Yeah, I know, it depends.
Right, nutritionists, some nutritionists are medical doctors, some nutritionists are not, but again, that's gonna be a very low impact, so I'm just wondering if a blanket exclusion is ultimately in the larger common interest here.
Or if, when you come to the special permit, they say, well, yeah, what's our, what's your business model, it's, you know, we try to get, you know, a thousand people in a day.
Right, and you just say no.
Because I do know it qualifies on it, you say low impact medical offices, is that a viable?
Language.
It's hard.
I wonder if we, maybe, maybe at, at the risk of speaking on behalf of the Board of Trustees, maybe what's gonna happen here is, I don't think every single use that the folks at Hudson House and Apoa object to is going to be excluded by you, but I also don't think that every single use that, that they object to, you're gonna allow.
Exactly.
Okay, so maybe we need to just have a little scorecard going here to try to balance everything out between a viable entity, a viable building, and a quiet neighborhood, and let's see where that falls, you know, in, in other words, going one by one is appropriate to at least get the issues out there, but then maybe we circle back.
All right, but we can just stop.
And weigh, and weigh things out, you know what I mean?
I mean, in that.
Because at the end of the day, you have to have a product, you have to, you have to leave him, we think, you're receptive to leaving him with a product that allows him to run a business.
That's the point.
Right, but that doesn't mean that every single use that, that would seem to have a possible objection is gonna be excluded, you know what I mean, so, so let's, I don't know, just thinking of a better way to do this, because you can't, on its surface, you can't sit here and look at one by one and say, all right, we don't want any impact from this, so the answer's no, by the end of it, if you've said no to everything, then you haven't done anything, you know what I mean, you didn't do anything good anyway.
But I think in that discussion, it seemed like we were in basic agreement, I mean, at least from what I heard from the board.
The way I had a party.
The kind of medical that we were saying we thought was appropriate, they also thought was appropriate.
Right, but I, but I think, I think what you were getting into is, is slicing through this one particular use to create a balance, when in fact, the slicing through may actually be all the various things that are in question here.
So, so you're suggesting, let's go through the.
I don't know, look, I don't know what I answer, I'm just trying to get through this, but. So, so you know what the, you know what these issues are, is my point on this.
Okay, personal, sir.
One of the things that really fired up everybody at Hudson House was when we saw that this was taken from.
The business.
So this is, and I, and I think, I think.
We understood it was a starting point, and, but this area is completely different from the business district, obviously.
We know. Okay, personal services, personal service stores, such as but not limited to barber shops, beauty parlors, tailors, they wanna say not including nail salon, with minor impact on parking and traffic, they, they can't put something like that in the zone.
That's not planning board.
But what about the not including nail salons and beauty parlors?
Does that, we have so many of them already? I'm sorry.
Maybe we're not gonna have any.
In certain way, it wouldn't be in keeping with sort of a, you know, a residential historic neighborhood.
Could you have barbers, could you have barbers, they're not beauty parlors?
I mean, that's what's, no. Discrimination.
You know, again, the part of the natural limitations of any use in, in this building is that it is, any, anything is going to be relatively small, you're not gonna have, you know, one of those beauty salons with 15 or 22 hair dryers against the back wall, it's just not gonna fit.
Right.
Yeah, but the design for the celebrities, it takes.
I mean, one of the things that would help those, for instance, is if, in fact, it was quite clear that the, the parking regulations applied to net, in other words, you know, if something didn't count as, oh, I'm sorry, the other way around.
My guess, my guess is it's net, that he just measures the, the, you know, the space in between the four walls. Four walls, that, I.
We can get that.
That's gonna be like, yeah.
I think with 14 spots that you're gonna have to, that Metro North wants you to put in, that's gonna cover quite a bit.
Is, is, isn't 14 spots that Metro North wants you to put in?
No, required, yeah.
You're required to put in?
Should've been in by now.
Okay, so how does Ford feel about?
Leaving the barber shop stuff?
About excluding nail salons and beauty parlors?
I, I don't know, in modern beauty parlors are such a horrible.
They're not even noisy, you're not gonna have 15 chairs.
Okay, so.
One person doing list person.
Services establishments, furniture services, other than a personal manager, is that, what does that include? Well, it could be like a computer repair shop, a phone, you know, phone repair shop or something.
What's the most.
Anticipation.
One you can think of. I just, I also wondered where these uses were in fact defined, is, are there lists, are there samples, are there, I didn't see anything in the zoning, for instance, that Apoa made for retail store included in art gallery.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, I don't, it'd be hard for us to find any zoning code that specifies what to be a town.
It's a comparing, it's around.
What?
It's a comparing.
Well, actually, yeah, it actually pretty much goes to the build, to the building department as well.
Is it, so is that appropriate to go ahead and have, you know, a small fix-it shop in Hudson, Hudson train station?
Well, if it's a phone repair, computer repair.
It's kinda out of the way, I don't know.
So, all right, well. Hold on, no, no, I think we just got our answer.
Kinda out of the way, I don't even know if.
He doesn't consider that to be all that important.
Okay, so.
Did I just say that for you?
So why don't we take it out?
It's important, I think we just take it out.
Well, no, I mean.
I mean, I don't wanna, I really don't wanna limit the building, because, understand, I have this thing for 260 years, so.
Well, in a way, you know, John, you're not really limiting it, because right now.
I'm gonna argue something, I mean, you're gonna have a lot of traffic from Mercy, students, there are things like, uh, cell phone repair shops.
And computer repair.
I have traffic there now from Mercy, they're, you know, constant, you know.
I mean, that seems to make.
But that's not you, that's.
No, I know.
So, which is, that's a good thing or a bad thing to allow these uses?
Leave it in.
I think it should be left in.
Left it, okay.
Can I just push back a little bit here on the, I, I don't appreciate the comment that you just want to be limited in terms of uses, this is a complete rezoning of an area that affects only us.
I know, but we're clear on that, but here's the thing, so we don't have to keep saying it back and forth, we also have to make sure the building can exist as a commercial entity.
We understand that.
So we can't disallow everything to the point that there's no way that anyone could do anything, the building would be torn down.
And I don't think we've done that.
No, but that's, that's.
That's why we're talking.
And just, just to say, I mean, you said it's your first shop, this is actually your second shop, because the first shop was you could bid, outbid me, and it was, I was the only bidder on the whole thing, I actually underbid the bid, and I won it, so some of you guys could've taken the building over, and we wouldn't even be sitting here today.
Oh, we didn't even know there was anything.
That's a good comment, all right, but this is gonna work, because that's.
Okay, all right, the next thing on the, okay, restaurants, they wanted out, I think the board had talked about, I thought, kinda liked restaurants, but what their suggestion was food service business with limited food service, such as a coffee or pastry shop, restaurants or food service with onsite cooking are not permitted, no food service business with requirements for exterior ventilation, chimneys, shafts, or other, or exterior ventilation apartments that shall be allowed, food service businesses shall have limited hours and no appointments for substantial parking, no serving of alcoholic beverages shall be allowed, well, one thing you can't do is you can't say that you can't have alcoholic beverages, once you allow a use that the A D C, the alcoholic beverage control department allows liquor, you have to have liquor, you can't, you can't, you can't regulate that, that's, so that one too.
Can you explain that a little bit more fully? I think that's probably a very big deal for us.
I'm sorry, anything you would just say, could you explain that a little bit more fully?
Are you, are you, I'm sorry, not to be, are you a lawyer?
No.
Oh, okay, no, because I was gonna give you the case on it, it's a case from, from, from the second department, which is our, our, our department in the appellate division, and they, it was, Pelamana had its own ordinance that said, property in retail districts for restaurant, they could have restaurants, but they prohibited the sale of alcoholic beverages, and the courts tell you can't do that, though, I know in a court of appeals cases, you can't do that, the only, I'm gonna say, once the village, let's find the thing. Well, I mean, once the village permits a restaurant or other public eating place to be conducted in retail districts as a conforming use, it cannot turn around and regulate such incidental, extending activities as the sale of alcoholic beverages, and that's based on, on a court of appeals case, if you have anybody who wants to know, I can give you the case, but you can't.
So, they would have, at Hudson House, if they objected, that would have to be at the special permit level, if there was a, a food service use coming in with, wanting to go ahead and get an alcohol permit?
Yeah, no, you can't, you have nothing to say about any alcoholic permit, only the state does.
On the restaurant.
Totally.
But if you didn't allow a restaurant.
You could say there's no restaurant.
So you have to oppose the restaurant, okay.
Yeah, 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 you would oppose.
You can bifurcate it.
That's right.
No.
On the special permit, I understand we can't go ahead and do it at the zone.
No, 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 you can't do it at all.
Let's say you get.
The reason you can't do it and, and the zoning is because it's totally preempted by state law, and so then they can't do it with the plan, or you can't do it.
So let's say you get to the special permit process, and you, you have a, you, can you secure a, a commitment from that special permit applicant to not serve alcoholic beverages, in other words, a willing? Can that, can that individual, can that applicant say, I won't serve them, that can be part of my special permit?
It's a policy, he could say, and he could say yes, and, and he'd say, okay, I agree, and then he'd challenge you because it's an illegal condition, and it would get.
Can we just look at this a little?
The issue is restaurants.
What is?
So there's nothing you could do, so discuss something else.
Because the thing, when I looked at your, the things that you put in here to limit, certainly, the example that comes to mind is Hudson Social and the Dobbs Ferry Station, which is not connected to or have any impact on residential areas such as, such as Hudson House with the immediate neighborhood, but I think your real issue here is not wanting the beds and exterior ventilations, chimneys, shafts, et cetera.
That's definitely, that's with the restaurant use, and then the alcoholic beverages is a big deal too, obviously, we have a whole college population here, we're not interested in seeing a whole bunch of activity related to, to excessive traffic.
Okay, but, but, but if, one thing I think we can agree on is that, or suggesting we might be able to agree on is that you don't want a full-service restaurant.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure you can limit to coffee or pastry, why not sandwiches, what's the difference?
Well, can I, can I give you, this definition is something I saw in another place, it's, it was, the, the use is limited service carryout restaurant, an establishment primarily engaged in the outside preparation of retail sale of carryout food and beverage products from a counter type installation for consumption off the premises, but which may also include the incidental sale of ready to consume food and beverages for consumption on the premises, such establishments shall be limited to specialty delicatessens, coffee shops, ice cream shops, pizzerias, and bakeries that exclude fast food and full-service restaurants and any business with private window service. The one thing that's, I just picked that up in one, I lose for a head, what that doesn't do though, is you say you don't want any cooking on premises, and this does assume you put on premises, but the other thing we say is he can't change the outside of the building.
That's my point, so we, so that's.
He can't put in big vents or anything.
So if.
You?
If, let's say.
That can be in this.
We could.
Yeah, that's how he had it, that the, one of the uses is it's gonna preserve the exterior of the former train station, that's how it's pretty much stayed the way it is.
Can I add something?
I mean, how, sure, but how, for instance, was it that the Dobbs Ferry train station ended up with all these ventilation shafts running up and out?
They don't have a residential store.
Can I just say something?
In addition to.
I'm not looking to have anything like Hudson Social. I don't want that crowd in my building.
George, the other thing that happened, when, when this issue came up in the train station in, in Irvington, that, the main one, and he wanted to put in, now it's the same as it was, but they got, the applicant before wanted to change it and put in like bigger chimneys and stuff, and, and there had been language in the code that said you could, you could preserve it except for, you know, incidental changes to whatever, we did not put that in here, we did not put that exception.
Because it led to, it opened Pandora's box a little bit.
Because it led to, it opened Pandora's box a little bit. Yeah, but incidental changes wasn't.
And his lease doesn't allow it anyway.
ventilation.
So I keep thinking, I brought it before, that what makes me think of is, what is it, J.J. Bean on Cedar Street in Dobbs Ferry, right? They have drinks, coffee, they have duck drinks, I mean, soft drinks, coffee. They have sandwiches, they have pastries, but none of it is, I think none of it's prepared onsite, right? They have rarely any room, they reheat onsite, but they don't have, as far as I know, they don't have any ventilation requirements either.
Can I ask you, John Michael, what do you think about alcohol in the building? Was that part of your master plan? I know, you know, a cafe was, you know, you were, you had a vision, you had actually contacted some folks regarding uses. You would, you know, you were in contact or you were dialoguing with Mercy, but did, did you have, do you have an opinion towards alcohol? Because I think that that's, that's a strong one, you know, for Hudson House, you know, in the pole behind it.
Well, if there was a cafe and they wanted to serve someone a glass of wine, you know, I don't, I don't oppose that. I don't see a bar, a full-out bar there, and I don't see, I don't want Mercy College kids hanging out there.
I think that's what, that's what the bigger sort of concern was, kind of a scene or.
If there were to be anything there, it would have to be something, you know, higher class, you know, to attract that type of clientele, but I don't see it being like, like Hudson Social, you know, or something like that.
It, will it be, I'm raising this as a question, if we limit the kind of food uses to what Marion, you know, had from the other provision, that really limits the kind of food establishments to, you know, a bakery, a coffee shop, a cafeteria, so that, is that enough to avoid the situation you're all concerned about, which is having a round bar?
See, I'm not sure, but my guess is that you don't get a liquor license for limited service carryout.
That's what I was just about to go to.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not jurisdictions, there's a food requirement that, that sort of goes around a liquor license, you have to have.
Yeah, but that's if it's a bar, yeah, but that's different, so.
To go ahead and at least serve on premises.
I mean, this is worth, I, I, I'll see if I can, my guess is that you wouldn't be able to sell liquor at one of these places, but I, I'd have to follow up on that.
Are liquor authority expert?
Yeah, no, really, I just know that one thing, because it comes up all the time. And of course, it'd be, you know, 40 years.
Marion, one of the gives that, that George wanted to have proposed, and you read it, was to try to go ahead and actually knock down some of the parking requirements associated with this type of use. So, I think that should be pointed out.
Well, yeah.
I'm not sure if it can be done, but given that so many of your patrons are coming, you know, walking to and from the train, that perhaps, you know.
Yeah, well, the truth is, there is no parking requirement for restaurants.
Okay. There is no.
I thought, I thought it was one truck per four seats.
No, that's only if it's over like, I forget if it's over 100 people, there's no parking requirement.
So, the description you read, that seemed pretty good, but obviously a pizza place would need a big vent, and so.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me read you the provision in this lease about the building, okay? It doesn't say you can't do anything, but let me read it. Tenant at a so-called expense may make alterations, installations, additions, or improvements to the premises, except the tenant will be required to make those repairs necessary to maintain and preserve the exterior features that qualify the building for inclusion on the state national registers of historic places. Tenant acknowledges that the premises have been determined to be eligible for, so anyway, in short, they might be able to make changes, but they have to preserve the exterior features that qualify the building for inclusion on the national register.
It would be useful if we could have that shared with us, because, I mean, today we haven't seen that.
Okay, I, I mean, do you mind if I send that one?
It's up to him, and he's, so far doesn't want to give it to us.
Every time I give you information, you use it against me.
We're, we're not using it against you, what?
But, yeah, no, that, that could go, that's fine.
It's really important to understand that you could get hit by a truck tomorrow, and we still have to live with a rezoning. I mean, that's just the fact.
That's a fair comment.
And, and that's what this is about. You know, you may have the best of intentions, we don't care.
George, if you give me your email address, I'll, I'll.
Well, he needs to agree to it, I think, right?
No, he just said it's okay to give it his page.
Yeah.
Give me a.
I might have sent you an email recently that includes George's address on it.
I also got.
Okay, okay.
So, some sort of, as long as it's not extensive. Amounts of the cooking. And limited or no alcohol.
Yeah, that, that's the issue that's.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, where are you on?
What's the next?
No, 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 no.
I think we're going along the lines of that.
You like this limited service carryout.
Could I request that, I mean, small group, right, could you make a comment, he had something he passed to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one, and I've owned one of these places before. And it's very common for people who own this kind of operation to do baking in really small bakery ovens, and they don't need to be vented. So, I'm, I'm saying that he can do a lot of what he, what's he, what he wants to do without ventilation. It's very common, usually when you go in and you get muffins in a, in a coffee shop, they're making those in the back, and ovens are only about this big, and they don't, they don't turn out enough heat to require ventilation. And so, it doesn't, I, I wouldn't, you know, when, when I think no cooking, I think about a, a flat top or a, or a, you know, a stove. And you need ventilation, but baking muffins, reheating, a lot of things, you don't need ventilation. So he could do that, he could do that in that kind of a restaurant.
All right, and that, that, this limited service thing invasions cooking there, so, so that's good to know that.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to point that out, because there's no reason to stop that.
Yeah, fans coming to the building, so.
Yeah.
But we still would be able to pair food. I don't think, I think over here at Bazaar, they, they make oatmeal and stuff like that, but I think it's only crock pots and, you know, so I don't think they, they heat things up.
Marion, can we restrict exterior ventilation chimneys and shafts, because you're applying that it's conceivable that.
Well, do you want to, I mean, wasn't the whole point that you want to preserve the building? But, but isn't it enough that they have to comply with the national register?
No, because you could make changes that.
Right.
I mean. I'd rather be redundant. Technically.
Concerned about overside.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's a great oversight.
Definitely appreciate that.
It would be.
John Michael, you wouldn't have a problem with us telling you that you can't put ventilation pipes through this, still.
Until I have a tenant that wants to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, but the historical integrity of the, of the, you know, of the building itself and the roof line and all that stuff would sort of.
Yeah, we had sort of agreed on that before, so, okay, so let's just move on. What's redundant, Larry Roy was wondering about, I claim here, out at the station, the laundry and cleaning establishments can't be onsite. Accessory uses customary incidental to a permitted use, but no accessory building.
What do we do with, I, I'm sorry, you went to.
It's fine, there was no, they had no issues, so we don't have any issues, let's go.
That raises another issue.
Well, I, I. Well, if we're talking about traffic, this is potentially a large traffic generator, right? People's dropping off.
We'll probably be in the train.
We're worried about other things creating traffic, so this has got to be.
No, that's, that's not a, okay, Jay, no accessory buildings, that, that sounds, that seems fine. Okay, science. And the language in consideration is the fact that the area around the train station is not a business district.
That's editorial.
Okay, but substantively, that the aggregate surface area shall not exceed square, three square feet. That was the aggregate surface area of signs, I believe. I have to get this section out of here, I don't know how anybody feels about that.
One side at three feet, three square feet.
What I was thinking, your sign ordinance seemed to be very much about being in the central business district, having a, you know, a big storefront and.
But what else, that was Bridge Street, for instance, and the Trent Building.
Yeah.
It was, you know, and this is a building with fairly small windows and, and, you know, we've got to post up the sign on, on the back, but that's about the right size.
It's, it's limited, well, right now it's limited to 25% of the business frontage area, determined by multiplying the length of the street frontage of the first story of the business establishment by 12 feet. I don't know, three feet seems like a small sign.
The 20, 25% of the front of that building? That's huge. That's, that's, that's a store in town.
No, that's, that's.
No, but it's 25% of the store, not of the whole building, right?
The front, the front, but just the first floor of the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the store, the first floor.
The whole thing.
Right.
Because the whole first half is taken up by the.
So, so if your, if your store is 20 feet wide, and then, you know, you go 12 feet, 240 feet, 60, I guess.
Could you read it again, I'm sorry?
The aggregate surface area of all signs shall be limited to 25% of the business frontage area, which is determined by multiplying the length of the street frontage of the first story of the business establishment by 12 feet. So if it's 20 feet wide, 12 feet high, it's 240, 25% is 60, so you could have 60 square feet of signs.
60 square feet of signs. So what is that, that's six by 10, that's the size, is this width plus, you know, 10 feet of.
But it also, the, the thing has to fit in architecturally with the constraints of the building, or the, you know, the architectural elements of the building. That's what the ARB is looking at, so you really couldn't have a six by 10 foot sign, because it wouldn't fit on the building anywhere.
Right.
Most likely, that's why you see in a lot of cases they have running sign. Look at the signage that.
Is all sign associated to ARB?
Yes.
It goes through ARB.
And look at what Bazaar has, because, Bazaar, whatever, because, you know, it has limited signage, even though it has that entire building.
Well, I would, I would say if you visit the, the building, that to have a provision that allows for something that's 60 square feet is, you know, a little bit. It's a very different area, it's a very different building, and I don't think there's any harm in built suspenders. Does it need to be three square feet? Is it aggregate meaning all signage on the building, is that what aggregate is talking about?
Well, all signs on the front, yeah, on the front.
So there's three different, there's three different establishments, and half of your first floor is the post office, which is unlikely to have.
There's gonna be one, there's gonna be two, two tenants, right? There's gonna be one upstairs and, and they make that be downstairs.
And the, and the post office, so three, different. I mean, the post office has to have a sign.
Perfect sign, never a shortage.
Well, so then there we go, I mean, that's, that's, that's included. So.
I think it should be substantially reduced from what the central business district is.
When we wrote the sign code for Main Street for the business district, we were making it apply to many different buildings, so we did this percentage thing. But here we are doing a sign only for one place. Because if we knew how big we wanted it to be and not exceed, can't we just say that?
We go back to the urban train station, which is certainly not oversigned in any sense of word, and that's fitting within the constraints of the sign code.
So it might, it might fit in, and it might be fine, I'm just saying that we don't have to make it a general thing.
The ARB guidelines, one of the guidelines is signs should fit within the existing architectural features of the building. The sign, a sign's size and shape should be proportional to the detail of the building.
So that's the thing.
You have a fail-safe there, yeah.
So, so, yeah.
No, I understand, but I, I think we like built suspenders.
I'm sure you do, and she says it's true, but, but, you know, it's like, what, what we put in this is not the end of the story, because it also had ARB in it, which does definitely address the concerns, that size and architectural detail and whatever.
Right, there's no reason so.
But for us to write it into here, you know, after your 260-year lease, because we're not gonna change it before.
We're not gonna change the site code for one specific property, I think the sign code is perfectly working on the railroad station.
It applied, yeah, it applied very well to this station, so I.
All right, well, then I will, okay, we'll just, I'm, I'm all right with it, but I, I do think the ARB will speak up.
Yes, I'm responsive to your concerns, I'm just saying we think there can be handled in a different way.
I think they're being handled right now.
Well.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think it's being handled right now, there's proof of it by an existing establishment.
Okay, all right, the following uses shall be prohibited, and A and B, those are standards. It says storage of vehicles, that's really not necessary to say that it's not prohibited, because if it's not listed as allowed, it's prohibited. The reason these things are here is because maybe the use is, is up there, like some kind of a service use is allowed, but it wouldn't be allowed if it's noxious or offensive, fine, okay.
So, for example, if you have some, a hair salon that's doing some kind of special Brazilian extensions or something, that's. I do not have any personal knowledge of Brazilian, but that's, you know, very similar.
Right, or they were doing, you know, they, they required a certain amount of ventilation, they get fumes or whatever they were doing.
So, so you don't want to eliminate beauty parlors or hair salons, but you will know that they, if they are the kind that has noxious orders, they wouldn't be permitted.
Okay, and then, and then, yeah, one thing that wasn't in your draft, because I think you were working from a previous draft of this law, is the other uses prohibited, is any use that includes curb or drive-through service, because we enacted that also.
No way, no way, we don't want that.
Yeah, that might be a lot, okay.
You don't want that either of you.
So Marion, that go is it, for, it's the storage vehicles?
It's just gonna take it out, it's not allowed.
You don't have to say it, because it is, it is prohibited, yeah.
If it's not listed as allowed, it's prohibited, okay.
Marion, can I ask you one question? When you started this whole thing and we weren't at the table, we talked about the boundaries of the zone. Why, what did you say about that, that it should just be the building? So, how do you deal with parking?
Well, the building and whatever.
If it's on, if it's in the railroad zone and not allowed?
Well, I'm, no, no, I said, I need to see what his lease is for, I need to see his, I don't have his lease description. And this, this will be whatever the lease description. And the reason I said that I will just wanted to refer, there, there may be some space around the, the railroad building, but it should be the, the actual railroad building, not, you know, the, the way it was defined here, because somebody else could take over ownership of it, and then it wouldn't be covered.
God, God, I see what you're saying. It's the actual parcel, that's, that's the leased parcel.
But, but I think that the, that this language about what it covers should match what's in.
Oh, it's matched in the lease.
Yeah, and I don't have that part of the lease. It's not, it's not to me, yeah.
Is this a legal description or just a drawing?
I don't know what's in the lease, my guess is it's a legal description, but I don't know what's in the lease.
John Michael, do you know?
We'll find that out.
Yeah.
Use regulations, the planning board shall require, in addition to the provisions that shouldn't be in there, because there are, everything is in addition to those. No special permit should be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the proposed use will preserve in its entirety the exterior of the former train station. I don't think that including but not limited to needs to be there, I don't think it's a bad idea to put in its entirety, but I don't think that clears, okay. Okay, this one is, is, is just for the board of trustees, I mean, I don't think it should be up there, but who am I to say? That it's gotta be accompanied by a detailed plan for restoration and renovation of the exterior. O'Brien had some thoughts about this.
I'll just finish something, you're right.
Around the use, yeah, we're getting there, we're getting around the use regulations, and it says, one of the requirements of the planning board is that it, the application has to be accompanied by a detailed plan for restoration and renovation of the exterior. Over a specified period of time, esteemed appropriate by the planning board, planning board should have the right to require conditions of the special apartment to ensure the timely execution of the restoration plan. Every special property application shall be referred to the ARB for its recommendation and report. The restoration plan shall include a historic review of the building details and attempt to bring the building back to its original detailing record. The restoration plan shall include a historic review of the building details and attempt to bring the building back to its original detailing repurposed.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, I mean, to me, my, my initial opinion on this was, you know, um, it just seemed kind of very onerous, you know, if this was a, you know, 20,000 square foot, you know, office space that he can rent out, maybe, but, you know, since it's, you know, I think, I mean, I think even you guys have expressed, or some of you have expressed, you know, that the chance of making this something viable, um, is, is, is difficult and to kind of, to shackle them with kind of these requirements before, you know, kind of, anything else, it just seems...
How, how do you go ahead and make sure you condition it so when you're going in and granting a special permit for stuff, for the use, that the, the tenant is gonna go ahead and make good on, uh, his obligation in order to go ahead and approve the building?
Well, who, who's that obligation to? Is it, it's not to the village?
No, it's not.
Is it to MTA? Do you have something in your, in your lease that says you're going to renovate the exterior of the building?
It says that I have to maintain it, and I have to, you know, um, you know, keep it in good condition, things like that, and actually, just like...
But there's, there's probably no enforceability that's built in the lease, they don't have to go before. I just feel like there's, there's gonna be concessions on, on the part of Hudson House in order to go ahead and get this commercial use inside of residential area, can be balanced by the requirement put in place upon the tenant to go ahead and make improvements on the exterior of the building.
It's not a residential area, it's a railroad district, I mean, it was, you know, it's, it's a train platform, and a built, a cessioned building, so, you know, on the edge of a residential district.
Which was at one time connected to a residential.
I understand that, right. And then you said, yes, and also, you know, because to me, the thing is, I'd like to see a way to encourage the restoration of the, um, the dry land or whatever you call the thing.
The portico.
Portico, yeah.
The MTA said they weren't interested in that, or it was not the issue?
No, they, I don't think they disallowed it, I just think, well, I think that, you know, it was a...
If you take the portico off or you leave it on the building, the building itself remains a treasure that we all want to preserve, and that's the reason that we're doing this, so if we allow uses inside the building, but don't put in place some, um, uh, way in which progress can be measured for its restoration and preservation, what's the point of the zoning?
Well, we don't do this anywhere.
I've never, I've never, of anyone ever saying, well, you, you know, you can use a building, but you have to restore it, and especially, you know...
I mean, if we're going to go for a landmark status and go for one of those easements that we talked about with Mr. Lombardi, I mean, you, all of that would happen, um...
But it's not by village regulation, I mean, we don't regulate the business district around the Trent Building to tell them that there's supposed to be upgrade in the quality of the facade of the building, which they are looking at because they want to maintain or upgrade the quality of the tenants, so it's part of the business practice that they're doing.
No, I'm agreeing, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I know, I'm just going out that, I don't see where it's in the code that...
We know what the goal is.
Yeah.
I think we all share the goal as equally as, as you all do about preserving the exterior and keeping it intact and...
I think there's a difference between maintaining and restoring.
Yes, maintaining, if you're maintaining, if you're, if you're required to maintain...
He's got a requirement for maintaining.
If you're expecting a tenant to restore our...
The post office would love to leave.
I'm, I kept them there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Where would they go?
They, they, they make no money.
They had a slated foreclosure a few years ago.
They make no money, though, it actually costs them money to keep that, that open. I kept it open because I knew that the community wanted it there, so I went forward for six months and chased all over this country to find out who would make the lease to, because nobody knew who to deal with. Finally found somebody in South Carolina, and I was able to make a lease to maintain that building for the Hudson House, to, to maintain that post office there.
Wow, great.
So, they would love to shut that down, and I was, I made them sign a lease, or a stay there.
How long, 10 years, 5 years?
Five, it was five. But they had, they can, they can leave with notice, so...
So, I, I guess, I mean, I, this seems, this seems, this seems like a lot of language that's not necessary, but just, I, I'd just like to be assured that it isn't necessary, and we achieved the goal by other ways.
No, you haven't achieved it.
We haven't achieved restoration, that's, that we have...
See, I mean, it goes back to what restoration should have to be back to the way it was in 1895? You know, is it just a fresh coat of paint?
I didn't, maintenance of it, as it is.
I'm sure there's things in the building code that...
Probably, I, I started, it's not the part, it's not in the part of the lease that I saw, but I don't have the whole lease, you know, but, um, I don't know what disagreement with National Landmark is, but...
One of the reasons they gave it to me was because I would, they didn't want to fix it. They wanted nothing to do with this building, so that's one of the reasons they gave it to me. At a good price, because I told them I would fix it and maintain it. In order to do that, I need to rent it so that I can get the funding to, to do that.
How much money would it take to fix the outside of that?
I don't know, it didn't, it didn't cost us much, we hadn't gotten that far.
Well, well, you said that we didn't make a bid on the building, I want to point out that, uh, a couple of years ago, I did a, a quick, and we couldn't, as a group, justify spending a lot of money on fixing, that's one of the reasons why Hudson House didn't buy that.
Okay, but gentlemen, that's not the issue before us now.
Right.
Whoever put it on it, whoever done it, didn't, the point is now, there is an owner, and we're trying to figure out a way that satisfies his commercial needs, preserves the building that everybody in the neighborhood is interested in doing. My, the word that came to my mind reading this paragraph was that this is a bit overreached.
Right, I guess, well, I, I agree, though, I, I understand. There is, there is, um, there is a, a system of tax rebates if the owner of the building wants to restore it to the level that the, um, National Landmark wants, and it's a 20% rebate if you follow...
That's, that's, yeah, it would be the MTA, yeah.
What's that?
That would be the MTA doing it.
Actually, the MTA doesn't own it.
No.
It was the railroad before then.
Oh, you mean the, the Central, yeah.
It still exists as a, as a shell corporation.
Well, I, I bet it would apply.
The original railroad.
I bet it would apply.
Well, it has to be the owner, though, which is the railroad company.
Well, I'll send you the details.
Well, one of the things that's being proposed here is, is not the... One of the things that...
Oh, right, it, but it doesn't have one of those easements for restor, it doesn't have that restoration.
No, but it's already at that level, according to the document that Mary Ann read.
All right, well, I don't know enough about this case that...
It's already at a landmark level?
That's what the document says.
It's an inclusion.
No, I don't know if it says it is or it's eligible.
Yeah.
It's eligible, it's classified as eligible.
It's eligible, but it's not, all right.
Oh, no, I know it's not a landmark.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
So, is there, is there language that's already in the code that a, a building has to be kept in, in, you know, a good operating condition and manner? Nothing?
Well, just in property, they said the state property maintenance code.
Right, you can't have a tumble-down shack.
What says that? What, where is that?
New estate, new estate property maintenance code.
I guess my question is, uh, in, in terms of it being over, overreached, we tried to write this in a way that said, this is a proposal that the tenant, uh, or the applicant would put together and present. That it's not a fixed timeline, it's not a fixed scope, it says the general intent is to refurbish and preserve the building, and a restoration plan will be put forward. So, I guess my first question is, is it simply not something that you can have in the zoning? Is that the objection, or that would be step one to understand, and number is, two would be, how can we try to get to the, to a point where we actually include what is the primary intent of the zoning in, in its requirement?
The only time I remember, at least since I've been on the board, there's anything like this is with the ARB review of demolition, we added that they had to bring forward, uh, renovation plans, you know, but that's different than this, but that's the only time that I've ever seen.
Yeah, the only standard that applied to that are demolition that I saw.
Could you, I, I'm not saying you couldn't have a provision like that in the code, but what I'm hearing from the board is that it's, you know, it's too onerous.
I mean, to me, it's also, I mean, you, we, I think we have, you know, four serious architects on the architecture review board, and if they suddenly said, you know, I want to have, you know, I have, I found the drawings from 1895, I want you to restore it back to, you know, like, to me, it's, to me, the maintenance is very different than restoration, and the word restoration is continuous in here, is in here, you know.
What, what power does the architecture review board have over an applicant's?
Well, it's in here, you know, we've heard the architecture review board for recommendation reports, and you're asking that architecture review board to basically come up with a restoration plan, and to me, that's, you know...
I was asking, my suggestion was that it would be the applicant who would come up with this, and he'll present it to them and say, yes.
See, I have a problem that, this doesn't exist in a historical district or historical home labor applying a regulation. We would be applying a regulation for this one specific building, that we do not ask any other, uh, building owner in the village to, to deal with, so, and we have no context to frame it, so...
And in a way, specifically in going through the historic district and the guideline, the design guide said you don't want to impose that
Also, it seems...
on buildings, so then, it would actually be just...
You don't want to impose what on buildings?
This restoration.
Of course, the restoration to a...
Also, what this seems to do is push the burden of developing a restoration plan to the tenant, who's gonna rent the offices rather than the, than...
Who would be making the application? Wouldn't the, the, wouldn't John Michael have to make the application on behalf of his tenant?
Okay, yeah, he would be making it.
Right, so it's an obligation on him, basically saying, you know, just do what you said you were gonna do.
I don't think there's any reception to this, I mean, it's not, I, I don't, I'm, I don't know how else to say it, there's no...
I mean, it's a compromise permission in order to go ahead and at least...
I mean, the way I look at it, you have to plant a seed and hope it grows. You know, it's like, the successful businesses in Irvington, I think Bridge Street is probably one of them.
Yeah.
There was never one regulation to redo those buildings and, and restore them and maintain them and adapt them. What did it was economics, you know, and, and...
I, I hear you, Brian, but look, look what the status quo is today, look what's out there, this, this is a dilapidated building, I stood on the platform today and literally watched squirrels go in and out of the building at will, that Hudson House is looking at today.
I, and I agree with that, but I think it's also, if I was someone who just signed a 260-year lease, I don't know what's gonna be permitted to be in there yet, I would not be spending money on restoring the building, because I might walk away from it tomorrow, you know, I might be trying to get out of my lease, if, if, if this, you know, like, if, if there's somebody, you know, if it's, if I suddenly say, geez, what I ended up with is an unrentable building that, before I can do anything, I have to come up with a $1.6 million plan to restore the building, you know, whatever it is, you know, I can see where, you know, the math just wouldn't work, and I'd be trying to get out of the lease, you know, so that's...
Okay, you know, I, I'm pretty clear the poor is not going to, and we have a lot of...
Yeah, a lot about the thoughts, let's move on.
Okay, um, please, okay, four, uh, that will satisfy the off-street parking requirements. Actually, that was changed, the latest draft says that there's adequate off-street parking for the proposed use. That's put in because it's actually more protected, because it mainly, the, the off-street parking requirements are not as demanding.
Right, they're not that demanding, they're not specific to the particular use, so...
They are for certain uses, but not others, so the planning board has to decide that there's adequate off-street parking for, for post use. Um, so that, let's say it's a restaurant which has no parking requirement, they still have to determine that there's enough parking. I, I don't know what this means, in view of the demand for parking in the area, the planning board shall have the right to consider agreements between the town and/or neighbors and the applicant for additional parking and access of the required number of spaces.
Well, the flip side is, what if he meets all of his parking requirements, he's still got 14 spaces, and he makes, he meets all his requirements with 10 spaces, we'd like to have him be allowed to, you know, assign some of those spaces to the town or to the village or the, or Hudson House?
Well, that's a business transaction, isn't it?
He initially meets what?
If he wants to leave four spaces out to Hudson House, I would think that would be a business thing.
Yeah, I don't think we have to allow it.
It needs to be, right, yeah, you could do it even if this provision, this provision doesn't enable that, it happens anywhere.
You start a liability.
Okay, well, demonstrate compliance with the noise regulations, that's not necessary, because we have the noise regulations. Will demonstrate proper procedures and appropriate containers for garbage floors removal, I think that's a good id, that's a good idea.
Because of the kind of businesses that...
And the location is...
That's the planning board, though, isn't it?
What?
Yeah, that's, that would come through here.
Yeah, it would be in the planning board, but they would just make sure that their, that the garbage pit...
It's addressed in the, what goes to the planning board, if you're gonna have, you're not gonna have uses there, no matter what's there, you're gonna have uses that weren't there before, or you're just gonna do a special...
And it, and it makes some sense.
It's probably covered in some way, somewhere, but it's, it's, it's...
Yeah, yeah, I think it's fine, I believe it.
Is this the, you know, air conditioning unit condenser sitting outside? What regulations are in place now to, um, in terms of the location and that kind of thing, or...
Well, there is a visibility thing, but it's mainly looked at with, by noise level and, and distance to nearby residences.
So, it's in a residential district, but is, is it also restricted for businesses?
Yeah, it's everything, everyone's, I mean, it's the actual placement of an air conditioning condenser, they look very closely if it's, you know, uh...
Planning board?
Yes, and the problem is, where I've seen it, you know, it's like, you have to still be inside of the, inside, outside, whatever, you have to, I don't think there's setbacks, there's, there's no required yard in this zone, so, but anyway, you know, the problem, right?
No, the rest isn't, the rest isn't hard, we have to go back to a difficult one, but the rest is not.
Okay. If you're going across the parking all the way to Hudson House, you're probably far outside the, uh, the zone of...
The property laws are about at the edge of the...
Yeah.
You know, we're not gonna get all of these specific things dealt with, there's a lot of big issues in this already 930, so I think we're going to have to try to figure, we should try and move on.
Okay, now we're down to parking, um, uh, the net across with it, whatever, however that does it. Okay, one space for post office use, I think it's fine to put that in, because it's zero. Now, this is up, this is for you guys, the planning board, as part of the special permit process, shall be entitled to reduce or modify the parking requirements. If an applicant can demonstrate that its uses are less dependent on parking than would normally be expected as a result of an overall effort likely used with those who are already hand-built or parked, or with those who are within walking distance, or with those who are likely patronized for post use during hours or adjacent public parking is substantially available. Planning board, in granting reduction and modification, um, can impose certain conditions on the special permit, including but not limited to periodic review restrictions on hours of operation fees or as a due to opening.
My take is, he's got 14 spaces, or will have, I can't believe that the size of the building and all the activity we're talking about is gonna require that much space, I mean, why would we, I, I don't see why they, I, I don't see why the planning board is gonna have to give a, uh, you know, a reduction, uh, lesson to...
You're often, you're often, this is a, a common provision, but it's usually in, um, like, mini mall and mall parking.
Yeah, it seems like this is...
Yeah, this is a too small...
Yeah, and I, I think it's enough to say the planning board has to decide, determine if there's adequate parking.
I think that's sufficient.
It's kind of a provision, I just don't think it's necessary.
For this particular location.
Right, um, all right, the following shall also apply, that there can be a $10,000 for space and dedicated to improvement to public parking in the immediate area. I don't know whether you guys want that, I don't think that should probably be there, it's really sort of academic anyway, since you never required anybody to $10,000.
You've never done it?
Never done it?
Not, not a lot.
We're just thinking, yeah, the money should be channeled.
Yeah, but again, I don't think, I don't think that this is the place to do that.
Hasn't been a period.
You know, you guys, I get it, building suspenders, I get it, but I think you're putting things in here that, that just don't go on in this...
Okay, the planning board may impose, that we're having... The planning board may impose certain conditions on the special permit as it deems appropriate, but the planning board will require, in accordance with 224E4, periodic renewal in a reasonable time, but I'm not sure what they're doing.
I think that your, your statute allows for the planning board to mandate periodic renewals, um...
Well, it can require renewals, some special permit... Well, it can require renewals, some special permits they just have for permanent, you know, searches and stuff. Sometimes there's a limit on it, like mercy is to come in every... But yeah, I think, I don't think it's a bad provision, but it has to be spelled out.
So basically, our concern is, you know, this is, this is the first time in our history that we'll ever be dealing with anything like this. And if after, you know, we agreed to this, but after a year of operation, we said, well, you know, there are things we'd, none of us thought about. We'd like to come back to the planning board and say why we think that the special permit is not sort of applied.
More like the mercy example of other five years examples that you...
Unless you'll get the planning board to specifically put a rider in that says they'll review it on it. Because it's the first time, you might be able to get them to say...
We just say periodic renewal in a reasonable timeframe. In other words, the planning board looks at the special, the special permit process and say, we'd like to look at it again to you, or whatever they say.
Right, that's general enough to make your interest and concern clear. It raises your flag, but it doesn't commit, but it doesn't commit it to a particular timeframe. That's, that's fine.
Okay. And then the outdoor seating. It has that... About the administrator granting the application after all the information submitted and upon the administrator's review with the immediate neighbors.
Can I ask a stupid question? A stupid question is, is there any force, is there any property space where tables can sit?
I have an even more basic question, which is, is this at all important to you?
Yeah, I remember asking you guys that, you said you wanted it in... Would you ever...
No, no, to the, no, the applicant, I mean, that's what I'm...
If I had a cafe, I'd put tables and chairs between the building and the platform.
You have room? Okay, well, certainly there is. So then the question is, do you want that the outdoor seating application, do you, right now, like for downtown Larry, just reviews it? Do you want him to review it with the neighbors?
No.
Oh, no. There are neighbors on Main Street that don't get to review, you know, their...
They're all neighbors.
So what happens when there's problems? They come to you, Larry, or they come to the police?
Haven't been any problems.
There haven't been any problems, but, oh, I shouldn't say it. No, but it's handled by the police. You know, if there's violations of the hours or if the cafe isn't set up properly or blocks the sidewalk, then we, you know, we deal with it directly, yeah.
And I think it's fair to say that Larry is sufficiently attuned by this procedure to your concerns, that he's not going to allow 100 seats in an outdoor...
No, no, but that's all, that's all regulated anyway. But, but the, I, there hasn't been a situation where there have been so many problems as to cause a reason for either revocation or non-renewal in the future.
What happens, is outdoor seating a part of the special permit process? In other words, is it considered at that point?
No, it's a whole separate process.
So if a restaurant, if food services house comes in and wants outdoor seating, they don't present that to the planning board, just...
Not unless they had to make a physical change to the outside. They had to make a physical change, but they're just putting tables, they put away, it's regular.
So it just goes straight to Larry and he makes a determination?
It's a whole picture.
But remember, the, I believe that outdoor seating, I thought, I thought that only applied to outdoor seating on public property. Am I wrong in that?
Good point.
Outdoor seating on private property is covered by the... Because we talked about that in the bizarre application, because they have seating, but it's on their property. I don't, I forgot how we incorporated that into the law. Because originally, it was only, it was outdoor seating on sidewalks, basically.
Is our seating permitted?
We got, it got in there somehow, and I can't remember how. We may have made a change to the law because of that, to allow...
I think as we didn't put it in the railroad, we never, we never stuck it into the railroad district and we came back later and put it into the railroad district.
And, yeah, maybe.
Well, you know, but Larry, I mean, Larry's making it along Main Street. That's up public right away, the sidewalks.
What's that?
Oh, wait, let me just find it, I'm right there. Sidewalk Cafe, 184... Yeah, it's a sidewalk cafe, an outdoor dining area, accessory to a food establishment, a food establishment, and located on a public sidewalk. Yeah, so then it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a sidewalk cafe.
So is it different that Larry would actually...
Yeah, so this was built, oh, so this was added probably to the railroad district zoning so that it allowed outdoor seating on the property. And we probably followed along the same processes. Maybe that's what it was.
That's why it's cut and paste.
Yeah, I bet that's why.
But I think having to requireingly the village administrator to consult with the neighbors is, who are never going to say yes.
Basically, fully initially appropriate framework that's, that's written for the sidewalk cafes on Main Street on public thoroughfare. They just bring that, you know, superstructure into at least one district.
But so, are we saying that if there is outdoor seating...
Village administrators authorized to issue a applicable permit for outdoor seating. Oh, yeah, well, this is what is wrong, okay.
All right, never mind. But, so same thing as public property, but we copied it with some changes.
So I'm unclear. Are we saying that if the boundaries of the zone include the area in back of the building as part of the area that John Michael is leasing, that that goes, and is not under your jurisdiction, Larry?
No, well, it would be the way it's...
It is, yes, it is under jurisdiction.
So what if, what if he would like to put tables and chairs on the lawn to the south, which is still in the railroad district, but not in his area?
No, it says no portion of the outdoor seating area may extend beyond the property, lies the property for which the permit's issued.
They can't use that area.
Yeah, because once it goes beyond property, it's public property, and then that's a different permit. So we're, that's a different...
Okay, so then...
So he tend to, on his own property, he could do, if we put this in, he can do his cafe like bizarre.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So then I'm taking, in E, I'm taking out the second one about notifying the neighbors.
Yeah, there it is.
Then in G, it says no outdoor seating area may be used over the 10:00 PM. The difference here is they're suggesting there should be 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM every night, not just Sunday through Thursday. Down in the business district, it can be 11:00 on a Friday, Saturday night. I think it's fine here.
So if, this is someplace where the proximity to the residential really does matter.
Right, and people didn't buy, it's not like here where we wanted to. So I think that changes, but... Serving the alcoholic breathers out. I told you it was fast, okay, but now the hardest thing. There's one other question you guys didn't resolve in this about medical...
After we did that.
You can't go by the number of pages, you know?
One sentence can sometimes take four hours.
Is there, is there a way to put a qualifier on medical offices? To, that, that it isn't a medical, you know, so when the special permit's issued, if you put some kind of qualifier, it's that it doesn't generate, you know, excessive amounts of traffic or something?
Can you, can you limit it to medical offices of no more than X number of practitioners?
Single practitioner?
Single practitioner, well, maybe not wanting to single, but I'm not sure that's a realistic approach.
I think we don't want to, we want to limit, we don't want to limit that...
It's the types of, that we were saying.
I think it's too far, I mean, because we're saying acupuncture is not medical offices, so that's covered by the professional stuff.
I don't think Marion established that.
But I'm saying, so, of course, PT is not, you know, but I think that's covered somewhere else. I think this is specifically medical.
I don't know what is not included.
I just asked, maybe this came out before, but the, the, one of the items that the planning board looks at is that the application or the use will have minimal vehicular impact to the surrounding, on the surrounding area. That's one of the items on... Yes. So is that, is that your circuit, is that your circuit breaker for these yet-to-be-determined uses that may or may not have large impacts? In other words, you're conjecturing that maybe this, this particular use might have it, but that use hasn't presented itself, so, so do you leave medical in on the idea that maybe 75% of the uses that he comes up with will not have a major impact? If he comes up with a use that somehow has a significant churn and turnover and creates significant vehicular impacts, that that, the planning board has an escape hatch?
Right, and that that's the basis on which we deal, instead of trying to decide who has more traffic in acupuncture, as there is psychotherapy.
Well, none of us know that. I mean, we're not sitting at this table anyway, but, but in applying for the special permit, there would have to be some expert that says...
And the neighbors wouldn't be allowed to weigh in at that point as well, I don't know.
Well, for a special permit, for sure.
Well, they have, they have their hearings at the planning board.
The question is, would you phrase it?
At the planning board, the public comes and speaks. But not medical offices. See, a business administrator, professional officers, leave it like that and know that you're protected by the language it says. It can't have only minimal impacts.
Now, where is that language?
Oh, no, it's, it's on, I think on the special...
3A, 3A3.
The planning board shall require that no special permit shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the use will have minimal vehicular impact on the surrounding area.
Can I, can I ask, why, in, in the very beginning, again, before we got to the table, you excluded section E and G from the chapter? Because the special permit...
Well, G has to do with revocation and E, if you look at E and you look at F, everything in E is covered in F. It says, in accordance with 228F, which are the, the process, 224A. It's because of the way the code is structured.
So E and G are involved in, in the special permit process, aren't they?
No, F is the process. I have to say that our code is, is a little odd. The special permit, the special permit process exists in the section on residential.
Right, so that's...
Just, so I don't like relying on it very much. This is just the way it is. One of these days, you know, it'll get fixed. But what F is, is procedure on planning board consideration of special permits.
Right, and what was E?
Considerations in granting special permits. But those are all covered by either, they're covered by F or by stuff we've gone in here.
And what about G?
G is about revocation.
So why wouldn't that be a part of it?
Well, because that's not what this says. If you want a revocation provision, that would be separate.
But is it?
Because we're talking about, you have to read the whole sentence.
Is the planning board allowed to put in place a revocation provision as part of the special...
No, no, it's not, no. No, because this revocation is done by the board trustees.
Oh, I see.
So it really has not, it's, I know, it's, it's odd, but it's just the way this part of the code is written.
But the planning board doesn't have to risk or renew a special permit though, right?
No, 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 it doesn't. But, but just be aware, I mean, special permits mean the use is allowed as long as you meet these conditions. Yeah, so it's not as, it's, it's not as, you can't be as stingy with them as it sounds. It's like, you know, it's not like a variance, so as far as we have more discretion. Yes, but, now the provisions have it written, and sure, it's discretion for you to determine whether it's going to have significant traffic impacts.
Marion, before this dissolves, would you recommend to Hudson House, I know you're going to go ahead and produce new language based on, yeah, that's made here tonight, and you're going to go ahead and have a public hearing?
I think, I think you got it out for Monday, right?
On Monday.
I can make this change.
We've got to figure out notice and...
We're going to notice it.
I think there's...
Too many, poll has to be renoticed.
Renotice, plus we also have, we also have referral to the planning board, I believe, unless this is not considered an petition.
Yeah, no, the only thing, it's on the agenda, isn't it?
It's on the agenda.
So I think that we could probably have this new draft if you want, it's up to you. It's probably not bad.
My question is, would you just recommend to Hudson House that, I know we're, we're fixed in terms of what the language is, but perhaps they should at least go ahead and speak into the record again their one, two, or three, you know, top concerns? Even though we know, we know, we know that they're not going to, there's going to be no bending in terms of alcohol. If you at least get back into the record, and that would be a good thing for Hudson House to go ahead and do.
Can you bring some confirmation?
You might change their minds.
Because, look, it's, it's a give and take. That'd probably be a good counsel.
Can we understand, I'm sorry, what is the timeline that's just been decided upon?
Monday.
This Monday will be...
Well, it's just the public hearing is continued, but it's not, you know...
It won't end on Monday.
Because it must be totally renoticed, because it's...
I'm sorry, you guys aren't going to go ahead and take...
No, 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 no. And yes, we, we know, it has to go, we do have to, we have to do... Safeguard it.
Yeah, that was my other question about that.
We'll have a good draft on Monday.
Okay.
We'll have a new draft on Monday.
Yeah.
But we're not going to be voting. It'll probably, it'll be in November.
And you would send the...
I think, I think the only possible impact might be traffic. I can't see any, because the building can't change, there's not going to be any construction or anything.
Traffic's determined by the tenants, isn't it?
Yeah.
What?
It may be mitigated by that.
I know, I know, no, 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 but you got to look at...
But you have to answer the question.
What about required parking lot?
What?
Required parking lot means got built.
Yeah, but we don't, that's not part of this.
Because we don't have, we can't do anything about it, probably.
No, no.
Well, didn't she, attorney, the village attorneys say in one meeting that it's in the language that it has to be paved? And yet, when I, when I read it, the line said it, either gravelled or paved. And so I'm kind of, I don't really know what the real rule is. Is it paved or...
What the parking space? No, I don't think, no, it's considered, it's considered pay, I'm not sure what the question was.
The question is...
It's considered pavement, whether it's gravel or pay. You know, in terms of coverage and stuff, I'm not, I'm not sure how the question came up.
But I thought that you were saying it has to be gravelled, that's what they refer to.
That's a, that's a kind of shocker, because the dust that's going to come out of there is going to hit the, hit the building all day long with the wind coming off the river.